While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, as the hour is 7 o'clock, I will call the meeting to order. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to those here in the room, those watching at home on TV. Good evening to my colleagues, respective town staff who are here this evening. There are three of us physically present this evening. Select woman Lovey Rantrioloff had a conflict and is unable to meet with us this evening. Select woman Julie Gilman, our clerk, is attending via Zoom. Select woman Gilman, can you hear me this evening?
Yes, I can. Thank you very much. It is impractical for me to meet in person tonight, and I am alone in my room.
Thank you, Select Woman Gilman. To my right, the vice chair, Select Woman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
To my left, Select Woman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our town manager, Mr. Rustine. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our recording secretary, Joanna Bartel, is on vacation, however, she will be taking the minutes through the video. And my name is Nico Papakosindis. Our first item of business this evening has become something we rather enjoy. We want to thank the Exeter Police Department Chief Pullen for sharing with us, and all of you at home and all of you watching this evening, the swearing-in of a new officer, and also the swearing-in of a promotion within the police department. And I think the practice started sometime this year, and Chief Pullen, thank you again for allowing us to share in this moment and allowing folks at home to see it. It's certainly the funnest part of our job, I would say. So, without further ado, we have a new officer, Jacob Hall, this evening, as well as a promotion for Benjamin Cluthier. I'll turn the podium over to you, Chief Pullen. Thank you.
And also, thank you again, Select Board, for letting us do these. It's super important for the family. It's super important for us, too. And also, thank you to the deputy town clerk, Sonya Lederfield, for coming tonight. So our first order of business is going to be a swearing-in of a new officer. And then after that, we're going to swear in a promotion for another officer. So first off, Officer Jacob Hall grew up in Bedford, New Hampshire, and is currently living in Salem, New Hampshire with his fiancee, Tori. Jake was a varsity wrestler and now enjoys training in jiu-jitsu. He holds an associate degree in criminal justice from NHTI and has graduated from the New Hampshire Full-Time Police Academy in 2019. With the hiring crisis in law enforcement today, certified officers certainly can pick and choose where they want to be. Jake chose Exeter. After having been at a training class with Ben Cluthier and chatting with him about our PD at lunch, Jake then researched the town and the police department further and found that it had the community connection that he wanted to be a part of. This speaks highly of Ben as positively representing the Exeter Police, and of Jake in taking the time to really research and initiate an interview at the PD where he wanted to end up. Jake began his in-house field training on August 1st and will be solo status in September. Officer Ben Cluthier grew up in Exeter and graduated from Exeter High School in 2013, where he played football with the Blue Hawks. Upon graduating high school, Ben attended NHTI and went on to apprentice as an electrician. Ben felt that he always wanted to be a police officer and give back to his community, so he began taking college courses in criminal justice. He was hired by the Exeter Police Department in 2019, fulfilling his desire and passion to be a police officer in the town he grew up in. Ben recently decided to go through the promotional process for sergeant. He proved to be very well-prepared and knowledgeable in policies and the law. Ben's calm and professional demeanor, along with compassion for others regarding both his peers and the citizens he served, are exactly the qualities we want as a first-line supervisor. So at first, we'll swear in Jacob Hall. He'll take his oath of office, and then he'll be pinned on by his fiancee, Tori. And then following that, we'll witness Ben Cluthier being sworn in as sergeant, and he'll be pinned on by his wife, Ashley. So would Jacob Hall please step up? So we think it would be best, the TV camera's right there, so you could face that way, and then Sonya could face this way. And then family can come up, take pictures as it's going on.
So you're going to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
And your name.
Jacob Hall. The Exeter Police Department.
In the Rock, in the county of?
Rockingham County.
Whereas.
Whereas.
There is a vac-- is this the correct name?
Yes.
You can just hold this microphone.
Oh, okay. Whereas.
Whereas.
There is a vacancy in the office of the police officer in the town of Exeter.
There is a vacancy as a police officer in the town of Exeter.
And whereas.
And whereas.
I subscriber.
I subscriber.
Have confidence.
Have confidence.
In your ability.
In your ability.
Integrity.
Integrity.
To perform the duties.
To perform the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
I do hereby appoint.
I do hereby appoint.
You, the said.
You, the said.
Jacob Hall.
Jacob Hall.
A police officer.
A police officer.
Of said town.
Of Exeter.
Upon your taking the oath of office.
Upon your taking the oath of office.
Disappointment and certificate.
Disappointment and certificate.
Of office recorded by the town clerk.
Of office recorded by the town clerk.
You shall have powers.
You shall have powers.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
And be subject to the liabilities.
And be subject to the liabilities.
Of such office.
Of such office.
Until another person.
Until another person.
Shall be chosen.
Shall be chosen.
And qualified in your state.
Or qualified in your state.
Okay, so this is where we actually read that.
So I, Jacob Hall.
I, Jacob Hall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
Impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And to enforce the law.
And to enforce the law.
And uphold the Constitution.
And uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. Good job.
Tori can come up and. We should have you recite a little bit more.
Thank you.
Ben? Ben Cluthier? You're next. You're only going to get to do a little portion of that.
Okay. Hello, Ben.
Hi.
Okay, so I.
I.
Ben Cluthier.
Ben Cluthier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As sergeant.
As sergeant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And to enforce the law.
And to enforce the law.
And uphold the Constitution.
And uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
We're demoting one. Thank you. And for the families, due to the weather, there is a room downstairs, right at the bottom of the stairs, to the left if you want to take more photos and whatnot. Thank you all for coming. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Congrats, Ben. Nice work.
Congratulations, Steve.
Jacob, welcome.
Thank you so much.
It's okay. It makes it more memorable.
Here he comes.
Here it comes. Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? Because Julie, is she going to do the vote? We have to do it verbally.
So we'll have to do, right, because Select Woman Gilman is.
She's nodding. I can see you, Julie.
She'll be able to do the roll call.
Roll call, that's the word that wasn't coming. The term that wasn't coming. Thank you.
So again, Mr. Dean, thank you in the police department. It's very special that we now are having the swearing-in during our meetings.
You're welcome. Yes, very, very nice ceremony. Thank you.
Our next order of business this evening is a bid opening for an ambulance for the fire EMS department. And it looks like I have three bids to open. Select Woman Gilman, for ease, Select Woman Cowan has offered to write down the bids, if that's agreeable to you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Excuse me. So the first bid is from Wheeled Coach Ambulance from Winter Park, Florida. The total delivered cost of the unit with a trade-in allowance of $8,000. The final cost of unit is $289,945.76. We're not done yet. They're offering a prepayment discount of $6,000. So the final cost with prepayment discount and trade-in allowance would be $283,945.76.
Like W-I-E-L-E?
W-E-E-L-E-D. Wheels?
W-E-E-L-E-D.
W-E-E-L-E-D.
I'm very excited. Got it. I was going to say, that notebook is empty. The binder is empty. You're welcome.
Mr. Dean, on this one, there's a manufacturer's name and the dealer's name. You want the dealer's name?
I think we want the dealer's name, yes.
So this one is Professional Vehicles Corporation. And they're from Rumford, Maine. And the total delivered cost of unit There's a trade-in allowance of $12,500. And the total cost of unit would be.
How much was the trade-in?
$12,500. The total cost of unit would be $259,654. These pages are good. The last one. Okay. And the last one is from Sugarloaf Ambulance - Rescue Vehicles LLC from Wilton, Maine. And the total cost of unit is $293,184.71.
Say that again.
Yep, it's $293,184.71. There's a trade-in allowance of $7,500. And the final cost of unit Thank you. Okay, thanks. I would entertain a motion then to refer the three bids to the fire department for the fire chief to make a recommendation.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Excuse me, Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Okay, we do not have any board interviews this evening. I would open it up now to public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody in the public to come up and comment to the Select Board. I would ask that if your comments are related to anything on the agenda, that you wait till that item comes up. Seeing nobody from the public, we will move on. We do not have any proclamations, recognitions this evening, so I would first ask the board if there are any amendments or revisions to the regular meeting minutes of August 8, 2022. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the extra Select Board regular meeting minutes of August 8, 2022.
Aye.
Second.
Is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. We do not have any appointments this evening, so we're going to jump right into discussion items. First discussion item this evening is an update on the train station. And from the train committee, we have Mr. Bob Hall with us this evening. It's been a while. Mr. Hall, welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's very welcome to be here, and I'm going to pass out some recent information on the Downeaster, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
I think so. Yeah.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
And if you want to go on to Lovey, I'll make sure I fill in your inbox.
Well, thank you, Select Woman Belanger.
Thank you.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here. I begin by saying thank you. Thank you for the train, and thank you for Exeter for always being so supportive for the train. It's hard to believe, but I've been on this project this year. It will be 34 years. 34 years. We're having our 34th anniversary for Train Riders Northeast, which I am vice chair of. Wayne Davis is the chair of, out of Portland, Maine. But it was a dream back 34 years ago, and it took a long time and a hard fight to the reality to have our first train, which was selling 20 years, which was December 15, 2001.
Before you start, man, I thank you for all of your service and all of your efforts and your passion behind this project.
Thank you. And as I said, it's been a true benefit to the town of Exeter. We have more rail service in this town than many, many, many communities across our nation. Five round trips a day. It's a great service. It works. People from all walks of life use it, and it's truly been a blessing. 20 years, though. 20 years is hard to imagine. We have, we have, there's been a lot of activity in those 20 years, and one of the things that we've survived was COVID. COVID brought the train to its knees, because really, we stopped for three months. We didn't have any service for three months. But I'm here tonight to say that we are back to 2019 levels. We have recovered full circle, and we're moving on. So to give you some rough ideas, I've given passenger counts. But Exeter, on a daily basis, most people do round trips, whether it be to Portland or Boston. 70% of our ridership is to Boston. But warmer weather, Old Orchard Beach has been popular. Freeport, definitely for shopping, and Brunswick is a great spot. The number one stop for Exeter, though, for residents of Exeter, is Boston, 70%. And then followed by Portland, Old Orchard, and Brunswick. The organization, Train Riders Northeast, was able to bring this train to fruition with cooperation of three states, three levels of government, and just an all-out, a plan that worked. I don't think it'd work today if we were starting over, but it worked back then. Exeter has about 300 daily riders. That's all trains. Most, as I said, most people that travel are round trippers, so they go down and back, so they count it twice. The things that happens mainly for commuters from Exeter, number one, commuting, that's the first thing. It was very popular pre-COVID. But the commuters fell off. About half the ridership of the commuters stopped for COVID. We're back to 50% of our commuters. So we have about 50 commuters each day. We were up to 100 before the COVID. We have, the other things that are very popular, special events. Red Sox, win or lose, people go see the Red Sox. 30,000 at a time. And the train is a great way to get to Boston. Right now, we have a little bit of trouble in the Boston side, because we have the orange line to shut down for one month. So people have to use a shuttle bus. But, and also the green line, the closest station north is government. So you have to use a shuttle bus to get to government. The green lines are not going to north station either. Okay. Some other recent examples of special events that's happened. Lady Gaga was down there. Lots of special, special things. Price of gasoline, what happened with that? That put people back on the train. We have, we're forecasting at least a 10% rise in ridership in the next year. With that in mind, we come back to Exeter. Exeter has been so supportive, and I come back to the table to ask one more time. Unfortunately, we are great at being able to have Exeter people in the area go from Exeter to different communities, but our goal is to have other people come here. And with that in mind, we absolutely need to deal with the issue of a bathroom. It's been 20 years, and there's no public restroom on. It's been twenty years, and there's no public restroom on Linden Street, Lincoln Street. We need to address that, I just, it's an obstacle for people taking the train to Exeter. If we want to host people, we need to provide something for them to use in the area. The second most common sign on Lincoln Street is no public restroom. We need to change that. The other thing that we miss, unfortunately, is we no longer have the Quick Track machine. We're the only community either in Maine or New Hampshire on the line that does not have a Quick Track machine, which is where you buy your ticket, if you don't use, if you don't get e-tickets over the phone. If you want to walk up and get a ticket, you need to use the Quick Track machine. Doesn't have money, but it uses cards. And we really need to have that. So my ask is, could we seriously look at resolving the issue of bathroom and being able to house a Quick Track in some small facility on Lincoln Street? And that's, you know, that's certainly an issue that the board should take up. And once again, you go back to who's riding the train. It's people in their twenties and thirties and forties, people that live, or actually, they're moving back to the city, and they're leaving the city to come and enjoy the countryside, Exeter and, and our region. But in order to get off the train in Exeter, unless you go to the bathroom on the train, you have to walk a half mile for the bathroom. It doesn't work. We need to work on that. Does the board have any questions?
It's more of a, it's more of a, I guess it's a question in the thought, and, and, Mr. Hall, not directly to you, but maybe Mr. Dean, or if, if, if public restrooms were installed in, at the train station, who would maintain the restrooms?
I think that would fall to probably our maintenance department.
Okay, so that would be an added.
Added responsibility, right?
Responsibility.
Yes.
And, and also, and that's, you know, that's not anything to obstruct it, it's just, you know, knowing that Public Works would have to
Right.
assume that responsibility, but also, you know, if you look at social media recently, you know, there are a lot of people who are commenting on the number of folks hanging out there at night doing whatever, I won't even, you know, speculate that, but, you know, there are a growing number of people who are hanging out at, at night. Would the bathrooms be twenty-four hours? I mean, what would, I'm just, I'm just thinking of vandalism and the upkeep and the, and the cost at the town, I just want to throw that out.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think Bob may, may be able to answer his thoughts on that.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, a couple of things. First off, as I said, the bathroom issue has been a barrier for twenty years. And I've always said, on most of the other communities along the line, there are hosts at the train stations. I perform that duty unofficially. And the number one question I always get asked is, where's the closest bathroom? I say a half a mile at the town hall, which is not too inviting for somebody that has to use the bathroom. So I would be willing to help put together a host program to regulate. My, my suggestion on when it's open, just for the trains, don't have it open twenty-four hours, the one, the one at the town hall's not open twenty-four hours. And I'm not going to say it's always going to be supervised, but my, my goal was certainly to be available and keep an eye on it, absolutely.
Can I ask more specific, because I can think of a couple of places along, you know, there's Seven North, there's Jerry's. And if there was some supervision, I'm sure with the, I'm sure we could work something out like that, but what does a host mean?
A host means it's a, it's a person that shows up when it's train time, and will stay there until the train leaves, and provides that function, opening, opens the door, and there's a sort of a supervision.
Got it.
And I've talked with the private businesses in the area, and, you know, they welcome people as customers, but the public restroom is, is an issue, and, and that sort of falls to the town, really. You know, because that's part of being a welcoming community, is that if you need something, you know, that, you know. It's a, I understand the liability, I understand what's going on over there now, and I picked up trash for twenty years at the parking lot at the Lincoln Street Station, and it's a fact of life, that people get food, buy food, and drive away and leave the bag right on the ground. And somebody's got to pick it up. I do it when I see it.
Selectwoman Belanger, any questions so far?
No, at this point, thank you.
Selectwoman Gilman?
No, I've been following Bob along on this venture for, for the twenty years. I think I moved back to Exeter, I moved into my house about a week after the train started. One of the reasons I could move back to New Hampshire was because of the train. So, though I'm all for facilities for the public to be more welcome to Exeter than right now, and we're out in the station so far out of town.
Thank you. Do, do we have any cost projection for facilities?
Not as of yet, no, this is very preliminary discussion. I'd say, I'd like it to be on the horizon, that's what I'd like it to be.
Right. I think we're thinking if there was interest from the board in this, that we would put together a work group to look at it further and get some costs associated with it. You know, I've put it out there before about ARPA funds, we do have ARPA funds that could be available, but that's to the board's discretion as to how you wanted to use those.
It was slipping away quickly.
Yes, yes, they are being accounted for.
I think the, I think the consensus of the board would be to go ahead and, and look into the next steps for that.
With the fan blowing above me, I can't hear everything, but, um, the ticket machine, I was just going to call it a machine, because I couldn't hear what you called it.
It's a quick, what's it called, Quick Track.
Track?
Quick Track.
Like the train track, okay, got it.
Q U I K, Quick Track, T R A K.
So the, the train line doesn't provide that, we'd have to, how would that work? Would we have to buy one?
When, when, no, when Exeter agreed to become a host community for.
I moved it, I'm sorry.
When Exeter became a host community, we agreed to provide the necessary requirements for a station stop, which was the platform with a high level, which is their parking lot. And that, that was all done by the town of Exeter, and, and the town maintains that. So they, they painted whatever needs to be done, so that's an expense to the town already. And of course, snow removal and all that. Now, the Quick Track is provided by Amtrak, but will be provided, as long as it's in a heated and dry place, that's the problem. The old Quick Track was outside, it lasted five years, five years outside, but it started to rust. And it's gone, and it's out of service now.
There was one in Jerry's, wasn't there?
There was, that, that was under a former landlord, yes.
Thank you, I need clarification on that.
Yeah, yeah.
They've updated the machine since that time, so it's a new, new style of machine that's, that needs to go in a, in a enclosed area now.
So would we be provided with a new machine as well as we could house it?
That's correct, NEPR, which is the organization that runs the train.
Thank you, for clarifying that, okay.
So is that something, Mr. Dean, we would construct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We've been waiting for, for, for quite some time, it's just a matter of being able to house it in an appropriate environment.
Is there a cost projection yet for that, or no?
Not yet.
Okay, so can we work that up too?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
Totally.
No, I think those are two valid requests, you know, obviously, the, the train has sustained the community for twenty years, and I'm happy and thrilled to hear you're back to twenty nineteen numbers with the possibility of increased use. That's a good sign in many ways.
Yeah, very much so, I, I mean, I'm surprised it came back so soon, actually. But I think the price of the gasoline has certainly helped a lot. And, and as I said, it's events, people, people just dying to go, you know, it's too much being housed at home. It's all, you know, and if you go to the Celtics or the Bruins, you park your car down there, fifty bucks. You can take the train for seventeen each way.
Yeah, I, I don't think we have the data really on how many people are still working from home, and that at some point might increase with the ridership, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think those are two very reasonable requests, if we could work up, Mr. Dean, some, some cost and what it would entail. I think it's worth taking those next steps.
All right, we'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
It's really exciting, it's a big deal, this train.
Good to see you.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay. Our next discussion item is the quarterly financial report. Our finance director, Mr. Stevens, will be presenting that, good evening, Corey.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
How are you all? I managed to get here a little bit sooner after the, the deadline date with the second report, so thanks for having me. So I'm here tonight to report on the results at six-thirty on the general fund, the water fund, sewer fund, and the three revolving funds. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to read it, and I know you went right home on Friday afternoon and, and made sure you digested it. But I guess before I start, did anybody have any questions, they want to?
I don't have one of you, Corey, but I do have the chair and everyone else in the room. I am having a really hard time hearing, because I think those are running. Does anybody object to me shutting them off?
Do you want to sit over here?
No, she can't hear.
Oh, no, I know, but if it's not in her ear over there.
I could, you, go ahead, I'll try to do this not. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Corey, sorry for that.
So, no questions, all right. So as you know, I like to start with sort of an overview of, of things before we sort of dive down to the, the five thousand, five hundred foot level. Starting with general fund, I would bring us to the second page of the, the financial reports and report out on net operating income as of six-thirty, two thousand twenty-two, which was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, compared to one point two million as of six-thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Obviously, these are different budget years with different characteristics and different circumstances. I gave you what I believe are the major contributing factors to those variances in my report. And we'll unpack those a little bit as we start to walk through this together and, and just try to understand them a little more. So now I'll jump back up to our, our revenue for general fund as of six-thirty, twenty-two. We had operating revenue of eight point eight million, or forty-three percent of anticipated revenue for the year at six-thirty, twenty-two, compared to nine point six million, forty-eight percent at six-thirty, two thousand twenty-one. That's a seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar variance in our revenue stream two years compared. So what, what goes into that number? If we look up, obviously, our major source of revenue is our property taxes. As of our, as of six-thirty, two thousand twenty-two, we had recognized forty-six percent of our anticipated revenue for the year, compared to fifty-two percent as of six-thirty, two thousand twenty-one. And stay with me on this, I promise this is the weediest section of the whole report. That's a six hundred and sixty thousand dollar variance year over year. Okay, so what, let's unpack that a little bit more. That variance is made up of three components. The first is the town's portion of revenue at, from the six-thirty billing we do each year. In two thousand twenty-two, our portion of taxes was five hundred and twenty-three thousand, less than it was in two thousand twenty-one. So when we take everything we bill minus the schools' portion, our portion was five twenty-three, less than it was last year. Second piece, much smaller, is our overlays, they have increased in two thousand twenty-two by sixty-three thousand dollars, those are our, our payment expenses. And third are the other components of property tax revenue, which were lower by fifty thousand dollars in twenty-two over twenty-one. So all that together comes up to the six hundred and sixty thousand dollar variance we're seeing year over year. These are timing differences, they're not a statement on, you know, one budget versus the other, they're a timing difference. So I'll stop there for a moment, in case anybody wants to ask a question.
Any questions, Mr. Stevens? Nope, okay, thank you, Corey.
Sure. So they work our way down the other components of revenue for the town. We see that motor vehicle revenue is down by forty-one thousand at mid-year over twenty-one. Building permits are down eighty-six thousand, we actually have more building permits as of six-thirty, two thousand twenty-two. It's just that the cost of construction in two thousand twenty-two is less than in two thousand twenty-one. Our grant revenue is down by thirteen thousand dollars, and all of that is offset by department income, which has increased by fifty thousand dollars over two thousand twenty-one. So we come to a bottom line of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar variance year over year. Moving on to expenses. Our expenses, operating expenses at six-thirty, two thousand twenty-two were eight point six million, forty-two point three percent of the operating budget for the year, compared to eight point three million, or forty-one point seven percent in two thousand twenty-one. That's a three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar difference, expenses greater in twenty-two than two thousand twenty-one. And that's the final piece of the, you know, the story on net income of the, the million dollars there. We, it's notable that our, our two thousand twenty-two budget is about five hundred thousand dollars greater than the two thousand twenty-one budget. So with, with both, with expenses being roughly forty-two percent spent in both years, our three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar increase is something we, you know, would expect, given the budget is five hundred thousand dollars greater in the current year. So I guess more importantly is what's driving the forty-two percent spend rate in two thousand twenty-two. So, starting with general government, five hundred and fourteen thousand spent, five hundred and thirteen thousand spent as of June thirtieth, fifty-one percent spending, nothing notable within those, within that group in the spend rate. Sorry, moving on to finance, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand spent as of mid-year, forty-five percent of the annual budget. When we dig into that, we see that IT spending as of mid-year was thirty-nine percent of the annual budget. Hardware and software costs, as well as contract services spending, was below budgetary expectation as of mid-year. But in speaking to the department, the anticipation is that those budgets will be spent out by year end, so similar, you'll see as we go through this, lots of spending as the year kind of goes on. The next category within finance with some variation is tax collection, which is forty-five percent spent as of mid-year. Also seeing timing issues on certain budgetary lines in that department, deed and property and tax liens, that's activity that typically happens in the latter part of the year. Moving on to planning and building, two hundred and forty-five thousand, or forty-three percent of the budget spent as of mid-year. Planning was at forty-four percent spent mid-year, wages were slightly under fifty percent. There was a timing issue with someone moving from part-time to full-time, so a little bit of catch-up didn't quite marry up to. moving from part-time to full-time. So a little bit of catch-up didn't quite marry up to what the budget expectation was. Other notable non-compensation cops, costs, sorry, with, that were impacted by timing, GIS software, and a study on rezoning. So in the works, but not spent as of, as of mid-year. Inspection and code enforcement was forty-three percent spent. Department is still looking for a part-time electrical inspector, and this is impacting wages, taxes, and benefits. Moving on to police, one point nine seven, I'm sorry, one point seven nine seven spent as of mid-year. Sorry, one point seven nine seven million spent, forty-six percent of the budget. Open positions in staff, patrol, and communication divisions is leading to wage, tax, and benefits spending below expectation. Other non-compensation spending lines were generally in line with expectations. If I'm wrong, Chief will let me know. Moving on to fire, one point seventy-two million spent as of mid-year, forty-five percent of the budget. Suppression was, the suppression division was forty-four percent spent. They started out with several, I'm sorry, several staff vacancies during the first half of the year with one remaining at six thirty. Several non-compensation lines were spent below expectation at mid-year, but those are also due to timing, and later in the year we'll see those catch up. Under health division, forty-four percent spent as of mid-year. Timing on spending of lines such as mosquito control, which is a large budget or a large-ish budget, is impacting results there. Moving on to public works, two point one million spent as of mid-year or thirty-seven percent of the budget. This is low, but if you notice, it's in line with spending in twenty twenty-one. What we find when we dig into these numbers is that we had a few divisions with open positions and several lines within departments that just don't get spent until latter part of the year. And public works being a large budget, you know, that has a, you know, with large lines, that has a fairly significant impact. Administration department was thirty-five percent spent under public works, two open positions at the beginning of the year and one remaining open as of six thirty. Highways and streets was twenty-five percent spent. They're down one heavy equipment operator as of June thirtieth. Several repair and maintenance lines, we'll see spending in the second half of the year. These are big budget items, such as paving with an eight hundred thousand dollar budget. Nothing spent as of, as of the middle of the year. Solid waste disposal was thirty-eight percent spent. However, there was fifty-two thousand of encumbrances at mid-year as well. Solid waste has significant lines with later year spending as well. Also contributing was the timing of payments to our solid waste contractor, which maybe perhaps one didn't get in before six thirty, so there's some, some timing issues on, on payment. Under general maintenance, thirty-six percent of the budget spent as of six thirty twenty twenty-two. They are down one tech position for the first part of the year, and they've also had their hundred thousand dollar maintenance project budget, which is still being rolled out and had not had any spending as of mid-year. I also just took a look, this isn't a line, but I took a look at just building maintenance in general across all of our buildings and kind of grouped them all together and said where we, how was our spend look like? And it turned out that it looks like we've spent seventy-eight percent of our building maintenance budgets as of mid-year. I gave some background on some of the projects that they ran into earlier in the year, getting the poolhouse open, that type of thing, just more than they expected. So just something to be aware of.
So while you take a sip of water, we, with the exception of the big-ticket projects that typically are performed over the second half of the year, much like last year, public works, the lack of the budget spent, it appears to be all of the open positions. Is that correct?
I think open positions are a factor, but there are also just small lines that just don't get spent as well. You know, I wouldn't want to speak for them, but I would imagine with perhaps staffing issues, lines like that, maybe get underspent.
Sure. That's understandable.
Yeah. Which, which interesting to me, and I meant to say the other side, is how, how the year-over-year budgets pair on a, on a spending percentage. I mean, they're kind of like almost in sync on a major department level with, with spending year-to-year with some notable variances, but it seems like patterns are very similar year-over-year. So moving into parks and recs, forty thousand spent as of mid-year. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Or I didn't go far enough, sorry. Two hundred and eighty-eight thousand spent as of mid-year, forty-five percent of the budget, with thirty-one thousand encumbered in parks as of mid-year as well. Parks had two open positions in the first half of the year, resulting in wages spent at thirty percent of budget. In speaking with the parks director, he noted greater use of contract services again in twenty twenty-two, so I would expect to see that budget strained as we go further in the year. I would call out debt service next, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars spent year, year to, or through six thirty, which is thirteen percent of the budget. You all know, but just for everyone's edification here, you know, we, we only make interest payments in the first half of the year. We make our principal and the second half of our interest payments in the latter part of the year. So, and that's true both in general fund, water, and sewer. So we'll see those, those budgets accelerate here in the, spending accelerate in the second half of the year. And finally, capital outlay leases, eighty thousand spent on a two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar budget, thirty-two percent spent as of mid-year. We have not replaced vehicles for a hundred and ten thousand yet. I believe we're dealing with timing and supply, supply line issues. So that brings us full circle to the net income number. Any questions on general fund before we, before we move on, or?
Any questions of the board? Select one below. Nope. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
And I guess I'd say at any time if anybody wants to come down and visit. I'm dying for a visit. You know, we're happy to, to, to sit and noodle on numbers all day long, so. Okay, moving on to water fund. Here we have net operating income of three hundred and forty thousand dollars as of mid-year compared to two hundred and fifty, fifteen, sorry, as of mid-year twenty twenty-one. The twenty twenty-two operating budget was a five percent increase over twenty twenty-one. Operating revenue at six twenty, at six thirty twenty twenty-two was one point nine million dollars or forty-five percent of the anticipated revenue for the year compared to one point seven million in twenty twenty-one or forty-three percent of, of the budget. You'll recall, we had a rate increase in July of last year. Driving these results, consumption charges, we had forty-four percent collected, which represented a hundred and, represented a hundred and eighty thousand dollars more in revenue, revenue than over twenty twenty-one. And we had service charges, fifty percent collected, thirteen thousand dollars more than twenty twenty-one, leading to our hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar increase in revenue. On the expense side of the house, we had operating expenses at June thirtieth twenty twenty-two of one point five nine million, which was thirty-seven percent of the operating budget, quite comparable to twenty twenty-one at mid-year, one point five one million, thirty-seven percent of the budget spent, representing a seventy thousand dollar increase. Notable expense activity, distribution was forty-five percent spent with eighty-six thousand dollars in encumbrances, which would bring the line up to fifty-four percent spent. Distribution had two open positions to start twenty twenty-two with another vacancy in April, which led to forty-one percent of the compensation budget spent at mid-year. As a result of this, overtime budgets have seen more activity. Overtime in distribution, sorry, was eighty-four percent spent at mid-year. Repair and maintenance, repair and equipment lines in this category were spent below expectation at mid-year, but this was just due to normal patterns of spending year over year. Treatment was forty-four percent spent, also had eighty-six thousand of encumbrances, would bring the spend on treatment to fifty-four percent at mid-year. They are down one full-time staff member at June thirtieth. Overtime also has been exercised as a result. The budget's a hundred and ten percent spent at mid-year. Debt service is the same sort of storyline as general funds, with the majority of our payments heading, being made in the second half of the year. Capital outlay budget was unspent as of mid-year. However, the department is in the process of initiating projects for that line. Moving down into sewer. Operating, net operating income of two point three four million at mid-year twenty twenty-two compared to one point nine five million at June twenty twenty-one. Budget, the twenty twenty-two budget was an increase of five percent over twenty twenty-one. Revenues for the sewer fund at twenty, at June thirtieth twenty twenty-two were three point six million, forty-nine percent of anticipated revenue for the year compared to three point two percent, I'm sorry, three point two million or forty-five percent of anticipated revenue in twenty twenty-one. That's a four hundred and forty-three thousand dollar increase in revenue year over year for the sewer fund. Driving these results, similar to water, usage charges, forty-nine percent collected, five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars increase over twenty twenty-one. Septage fees, fifty-seven percent collected, forty-four thousand over twenty twenty-one. And all of those, both of those were offset by a decline in lien revenue of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand from twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-one was an abnormal year, as I understand it, as related to liens on sewer. So we're back down to sort of normal trends in, in revenue in that line. I'd also note that we received our, I want to say it's our first, correct me, Mr. Dean, if I'm wrong, SAG payment, state aid grant for FY twenty-two, twenty-three to go towards the wastewater treatment debt service, and that was one point four million dollars, and we received that late last week.
The finance director just stole my thunder from my report.
I'm sorry. You want me to, let's rewind that.
No, that's fine. That's, that's great news, and that just happened today.
Yeah.
Yeah. We just got the money in today, so it's, it's great news on the SAG.
Worth hearing again, Mr. Dean, with the tone of energy.
I will repeat it many times.
Yeah. So what we'll see is the FY twenty-four, as we understand it, will hit in our FY twenty-three budget year. And I believe that number's closer to a million dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes. One point oh four, I think.
So on the expense side, operating expenses at June thirtieth twenty twenty-two were one point two eight million dollars, seventeen percent of the operating budget for the year compared to one point two two million, also seventeen percent in twenty twenty-one. And, you know, aside from some of the, of the divisions we'll speak about, what's really driving that number is the debt payments. We've got, you know, four million dollars budgeted, four point three this year, and we've spent a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. So, you know, three percent on, on our, on our debt service line is, is driving that, seventeen percent overall spending. Collections was thirty-five percent spent, similar to distribution. They're having, you know, they share positions, and the staffing shortages are, are driving those lower-than-expected results at mid-year. Treatment was thirty-eight percent spent also, one member short at mid-year. Wages and taxes were forty-two percent spent. Non-compensation lines also below expectation. I shouldn't say below expectation. There's timing issues there. They're just spent later in the year. We spoke about debt service. Capital outlay underspent mid-year, but there are, there are projects in the works, as I understand. All right. So moving on to our three revolving funds. Starting with cable access television. Cable access television is in a net deficit position as of six thirty twenty twenty-two, which our budget calls for a net deficit as of the end of the year. It's just higher than we would have anticipated for, you know, forty-six thousand net deficit, which is somewhat misleading because we've only received one of our franchise fee payments instead of two. So it would bring that, it would bring that deficit number more in line had we. So I think this is typical each year. We get those, we get three of them in the second half of, of the year, if I'm not mistaken.
Can I jump in for a quick minute?
Sure.
Mr. Dean, we, we talked about this, what, probably a year ago? You know, this is becoming like a bigger, more significant chronic problem annually. Are we working on ideas maybe to?
Yeah, I think the, the issue with the cable TV fund, and I've said, I've said this at previous meetings, is that we're, we are not bringing in on a, on a dollar-for-dollar basis. We're, we're experiencing deficits each year, but what we're doing is sort of whittling away at our fund balance, and the time has probably come to really hone in on the franchise fee itself and have some conversations about maybe changing that percentage that, of the franchise fee that's going directly toward the, the cable TV fund. So I'd like to, you know, we, we can put that on a further agenda, and I know Corey and I have had preliminary talks already about it and know that it's something that we should bring back to the board for discussion and, and recommendations.
Maybe during the budget season.
Yes.
Okay.
We can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that.
Yes.
You know, in my department.
No, I just, I don't want to speak for Anna, who is the new chair of the subcommittee for general government, but she'll be happy to hear that, that that's going to be discussed.
Yeah, right now, for those who may be watching and not, not knowledgeable about it, right now it's a fifty-fifty split. Fifty percent of the franchise fee goes to the general fund and fifty percent goes to the cable TV fund. So we would be looking at that percentage and whether that needs to change. And that would require a town vote to do that.
Thanks, Corey.
Thank you.
Yep. You know, on, on the expense side of things, you know, expenses are broken down between wages and taxes and then just general expenses grouped. They're both tracking as we would expect, fifty-ish percent at mid-year. So on budget from a, from an expense side of the ledger. Rec revolving, I'm sorry, I opened this and looked at how small it was today. So if anybody has a hard time seeing, I apologize. Let's see, rec revolving, operating revenue of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand at mid-year twenty twenty-two, eighty-three percent of the anticipated revenue for the year. This is compared to three hundred and six thousand at mid-year twenty twenty-one or fifty-three percent. It's an increase of eighty-two thousand dollars. It's an increase of $82,000. Safe to say that, you know, rec is open for business and, and starting to see activity that even in 2021 it, it hadn't seen, so that's a good thing. Driving these results, program revenue, 81% of budget, $375,000 at mid-year. The department's seeing strong participation in camps, sport offerings, and other program offerings. Impact fees are $13,000 over 2021. Also notable is sponsorship fees, which are part of the 375,000 in program, but we've brought in 12,000 of sponsorship fees, which is 241% of our, our budget. On the expense side, operating expenses at June 30th, 2022 were 137,000, 34% of the budget for the year compared to 63,000, 12% of the budget in 2021. So that kind of shows you where we were, you know, with COVID and, and kind of rebounding. That's an increase, so that's an increase in, in expenses of $74,000. Wages, tax, and benefits were 14% spent at June 30, 2022, which I, I believe we would expect, given that the lion's share of our activity is the summer and the hiring of part-time folks. General expenses and capital outlay were, that spending was in line with expectations as of mid-year. Overall net income, as I said, was 238,000 at mid-year. You know, we have improving revenues, but we also have expenses that go along with those improving revenues. But a net gain of $9,000 when you take it, you know, change year over year. Revenue for EMS, operating revenue was $270,000 at June 30, 2022, 50% of the anticipated revenue for the year compared to 268,000, 47% in 2021. Very similar results, obviously. Although it is notable, I had a conversation with, with the chief. We are seeing an increase this year in service calls and billable transports. Service calls are up by 94, and billable transport is up by 210, and these are counts, I believe we're talking here. If those results are to hold, we may, you know, see improved revenue that we, you know, may not have quite anticipated as the year goes on. Operating expenses at June 30 were 126,000, representing 34% of the budget compared to 147,000 or 39% of the budget at mid-year 2021. The main difference between the two years is capital outlay. There was a $20,000 capital outlay in 2021 that is not on the books at mid-year 2022. And as you can see, our, our net income for the fund is roughly $20,000, so I'm attributing that to that, that capital outlay. There are a couple of other, you know, schedules for you to review. And again, if anybody has any questions or wants to stop by and, and talk more about results, I'm happy to, happy to do that.
Well, thank you, Cory. Any questions for Mr. Stevens?
No.
Selectwoman Gilman?
No.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you for this update, right on the heels of the, of the last one you gave us, and I think this puts us in a good spot for the upcoming budget season.
I think heels is being generous, but I'll take it.
But thank you. I mean, this, this gets us ready for the next step, which is the, the draft budget next month, so.
Yep.
Appreciate the update.
I think I'm very next on the agenda, so that's why I'm continuing to stand here.
I think you are. You have a memo here about the use of water and sewer impact fees, which we've read, but I don't know if you wanted to summarize the memo for the board. Any questions for Mr. Stevens?
No questions.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Selectwoman Gilman, any questions?
No.
Okay. Cory, unless you, did you want to summarize it, or I could try to craft a motion?
I can summarize it if you feel it's helpful, sure. So back in 2019, separate water and sewer impact fee bank accounts were open, and impact fees have been deposited into those accounts ever since that time. So we've been accumulating balance, which we are allowed to use towards paying down debt. So what I've proposed is to now take 2019 and 2020 impact fee activity from both water and sewer and move it into the water sewer funds and, so that we can then pay down, dealt with it. Essentially just bringing money in that we're allowed to do.
Mr. Dean?
Yeah, I'd just add that I think in the motion, you want to use the words "release impact fees" to the water and sewer funds?
Rather than transfer?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Let's see what we can craft here. I would entertain a motion to release 197,870.66 of respective water and sewer impact fees collected in 2019 and 2020 to their respective funds. The breakdown represents 63,160.86 to the water impact fee account and 134,709.80 to the sewer impact fee accounts respectively.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Cullen?
Aye.
Selectwoman Blanchard?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Thank you, Cory.
You're welcome.
Our last discussion item this evening is a continued conversation on the public safety complex proposal. In our packet, we have a memo from our town planner, Dave Sharples, who's here this evening along with Police Chief Poole and Deputy Chief McCain and, and I believe a consultant from L...
Lavalley-Brenzinger.
Thank you.
Lavalley-Brenzinger Architects or LBA?
I was going to try, but.
Bob Robacheck.
Thank you. Mr. Sharples, good evening.
Thank you, good evening. So just to bring you up to speed a little bit, in concert with the select board, the facilities advisory committee, town staff, Lavalley-Brenzinger Architects, MRI, and their subconsultants, we reviewed a host of options, combinations to site a new police station and/or new fire station, with or without a substation. And, you know, from, we looked at locating it at the existing site at 20 Court Street. We looked at our town-owned property on Holland Way. We looked at 3032 Court Street, and we looked at 6 Continental Drive, which is a town-owned parcel that the town purchased maybe about, you know, 12, 15 years ago or so for the purpose of public safety use. And with, through these discussions with the select board, facilities advisory committee, town staff, we did develop conceptual plans for a new police station and fire substation at the town-owned land at 6 Continental. If you remember, we, that came before this board, and we discussed with or without a fire station, and it was decided to, you know, move forward with, with plans and estimates for a new PD and with a fire substation, and that's part of what will be presented tonight. So now that we've kind of identified a path forward for 6 Continental that includes the PD and the fire substation, it's what to do with 20 Court Street. And what we looked, we looked at a couple of different options. One was raise the site and build new construction or renovate the existing site. And as Bob from LBA will get into further detail, the renovation, we, we tasked him with a renovation saying, what can you do for $4 million or less? But then maybe add alternates, like what, what are other things that could be done? What would you do, priority for that number? And then what could you do with additional? So it's almost like a menu, he will present that. He has informed me that, you know, the town can reasonably expect to get 40-plus years out of new construction, and a renovation, you could reasonably expect 15 to 20 years. Also, before I pass it on to him, we did task him with a couple of things. The estimates that you have are $20, $22, that's, the facilities advisory committee wanted that, I think that's prudent too as well, to, you know, keep it in today's dollars. But we also knew that these projects are going to be bought out, aren't going to be bought out for a while, even if for some reason they got on the March warrant, they, they would, you know, they have to be final designed and, and put out to bid and, and contracted, so the buyout is probably 2024 at some point. So we asked them to, in addition to the, in the estimates, you'll see that they also added an escalator of what they felt that that cost could be at buyout. And another important component, and I believe maybe I know why, the two ladies are here, is I asked them to cost out, this is, the estimates were based on mid-level construction, you know, not, not cheap, not, you know. Yeah, he'll, he'll cover that in more detail, but, but I said, what would you add for net-zero approach? Kind of an approach for, you know, no carbon emissions building and very energy efficient, and he'll go over that as well. There's some percentages that he gave if we want to give. But I will add, the reason I brought that up is I've been working with Kristin Murphy, actually today, some new guidance came out for, for some potential funding for that. We, we don't know all the details yet, but we're looking into it, and I, I believe there's opportunities with the Inflation Reduction Act that could be utilized to offset some of those costs if we were to make, you know, energy improvements to, to the new construction. So with that, I'll pass it off to Bob Robacheck.
Do you want to bring up the? Oh yeah, I don't know, what do I? Do you call? Do I have to?
Well, I can see Julie, I can see Julie on my screen, so. If she raises her hand for...
Want me to share my screen?
We do not.
No.
Only Mr. Dean does that.
Is this all for me?
Um, yeah, yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a digital one, so it's, it works just like a laser pointer, but it shows up on the computer.
Just hold up.
Yeah, just hold.
Just have, some people hear it, something like that.
I can get it.
Just, just, you, you're just like, you're just like, you know. Cold?
Yeah, something.
Cold. I finally dried off. I was totally wet when I came in the building.
Is it still raining outside? It was pouring.
Yes, it is.
Oh, thank you.
So I should be able to go, full screen.
It's been hot all summer, and tonight I'm freezing.
There you go, full screen on. All right, we're in business. Let's see if this works. Yeah, it works. Awesome.
I think the arrow should flip.
Oh, thank you for that, too.
You want to hang out for one second while I go through the first one? All right, sure, good to go?
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much. My name is Bob Robacheck. I'm the Civic Studio Leader for Lavalley-Brenzinger and the Public Safety Planner, Lead Planner, Designer. I'm going to, it's 10 months worth of work, so I want to keep it kind of high level, if it's okay with you. We've been working, really, can't believe it's been 10 months. We interviewed for the project in this, in this room, actually. I was pretty much standing where I am now, I think, David. And so David gave a good synopsis of where we've been. It's been a journey, you know, we, we did an assessment of the existing building. I believe you've all had that report. It was finished, I believe, in December, November, December of last year. And then we started looking at the multiple sites, and I got to get into them because the ones that didn't make it to the finish line, you know, but we looked at a lot of different things, working with both the chiefs and their command staff, the deputy chiefs, and, and some of their other staff too, and with David. So the, the three options I'm going to go through are basically, the ones that made it to the finish line, the, the new police facility on Continental with a substation, it would be the same regardless of whether there'll be a renovation of the existing public safety building for fire only, I'll talk about that in a minute, or whether the, the facility's basically torn down and replaced with a new fire facility. So in any way, both of those would happen after the police moves out. So I'm going to go through these really quickly, you know, more than happy to entertain any questions, but again, it's hard to, you know, 10 months worth of work in 15 or so minutes. But this is Continental. It's, it's a really good site. We did some original looking at it back in December, January, and February to make sure that both a police, a standalone police and/or a police and a substation would fit on a site, and it does. This, this, there are a couple of things about public safety design, and I'm going to just touch on them really quickly, that we look for in a site. One of them is that you want to have more than one, more than two means of egress and ingress. This does have that. Police is, as you see, is on this side, five substations over here, you have an apparatus apron right here, you have police parking in the back, we're able to have this access point, this access point, and then the apparatus base, and then for fire, fire is in red, police is in, should be blue, it's kind of light-colored, and then the visitors parking here because there is a pretty good size community room slash EOC slash training room here. So the police wanted to have a little more public parking. The, the parking for police and fire is secured, that's another thing that we look at. So we have, you know, security here, and there's a driveway that exists right here that can stay. But overall, the site, you know, worked really well. And, and it's a two-story facility, you'll see in a minute, fingers crossed, we went the wrong way. All right. So I'm going to just quickly, so this is the footprint that you saw on the, on the site plan. And so I'm going to walk you through this real quick. So we worked extensively with the gentleman on my left here, Chief Poole and Deputy Chief McCain, on the police side. You know, one of the things I've probably worked on more than two and a half dozen police facilities, you know, in the last 10 years. And everyone is unique, right? We always talked about how I'm looking at the police chief and deputy chiefs, they're all unique, and it's not cookie cutter. You know, there's basic good planning for a good police station, including being, be able to be CLEO certified, and the security of the public as well as the officers and the police staff, which is unfortunately these days is a key driver in the design of police stations. But this facility, and, and our design doesn't bend like that, that's the screen, I want to point that out. But the, the public parks over here, so there's a public lobby vestibule, there's a community room slash training room here, and so the public can come in, use this common area, the records area, if you have to come to a police station to get a record, an accident report or whatever, it's right off the lobby, and then dispatch is right off the, I mean, I'm sorry, and then patrol's off the lobby as well with a window. So you have eyes on this thing 24/7, you know, police works in three shifts 24/7, so somebody's there all the time. Beyond that point, it's a secure facility on the first floor with, with patrol here, mechanical supports, evidence holding, Sallyport, booking intake, processing, all self-contained, so the public really has access to these areas, including an interview room, a bathroom, lobby, a nice lobby, et cetera. On the left-hand side, and this is where doing a combined facility takes a little bit of ingenuity and a little bit of, of thinking, how to do it so it works well, because when we do that, it actually does save some space, there's a, there's some savings to a combined facility, anywhere from 5 to 15% of the overall footage can be saved, they can share some. In this case, this is a fire substation, it's two bays, one large apparatus and two double stack for smaller apparatus and ambulance. And then this is the bunker ready room, the radio room, everything that you need to basically, and a support like decontamination, decon, all locker rooms for the firefighters coming off a call. then by the time you go upstairs to the living quarters, you'll see in a minute, that's, that's the cold zone, this is actually, this is actually the, the warm zone. So I'm going to move on to, see if I get this right here. I just pressed the button, but, hmm, nothing happened. Whoops. Oh, I don't know what happened there. We may need our tech assistant. I just pressed the forward button and it did something, I'm not sure what. Sorry about that. The analogy will fail you when you most need it. My dad always said that.
I turned on that new remote so folks at home can see the laser pointer.
Ah, awesome. Awesome. Oh, by the way, my, my apologies on the cover of the report, it says town everywhere except for the very top of the city, so we have to make that change. I noticed that this, tonight at six fifteen before I left home, so sorry about that. See that? Yeah. Everywhere else says town, but in that one place it says city, sorry about that. There we go.
I'll do it.
All right. You might be my Vanna?
Yeah.
All right, perfect. So the upstairs, so, so when you do this kind of facility, it's not like designing an apartment building or a shopping center or an office building. Somehow things stack vertically is, is critical, especially because in a police station, as I joke with a chief and deputy chief, usually seventy percent of the space program wants to be on the first floor, you know? So how you balance that, that is, is always a little bit of a challenge as well. So, so the, the elevator that gets you up here if you're public is right here. This is the only common hallway for public. You would have to be, you know, called up or escorted to, to go up, and that was the, the desire of the police department. Up here, you've got the dispatch area, there's a nice open area to the lobby. We, to make some things balance out, we were able to create an opening, this is a concept, first of all, nobody's building from this, it's a high-level concept, but we're able to put a nice two-story space inside the lobby because we also needed to balance the space on the first floor with the second floor, you know what I'm saying? Otherwise, it wasn't exactly the same square footage on both floors, if you're with me. So that's a nice feature. Beyond here is detectives, we have the men and women's officers locker rooms, we have, we have police toilet rooms that serve administration, which is over here, this is administration in blue, and then detectives over here. And then we had an area above the Sally port and some of the evidence intake, which we were able to do kind of a little outside deck area. We always try to build an area within the police station that officers can come back and decompress from a call. It's a very stressful job, as you might know, and providing an area that's a little bit softer, or maybe a little bit outside space is always a good idea. We did that in Manchester, the Manchester Police Department as well, so. This is where the sort of magic happens because this is the upper part of the substation, and the fire department, Chief Wilking can tell you, can use the, the fitness room and the agility and fitness room here, so that's a shared function. And we, we had to be very careful in the design because we didn't want fire to be able to get beyond this secured point while being able to share this great facility here for, for fire staff. So upstairs in the fire station, the substation are bunk rooms, and we call the, the living area the firehouse, which is a day room, kitchen, dining facility, and a couple of offices, and then two unisex washrooms that, that would be used by fire staff in their unisex, so they contain a toilet, a shower, and a sink, can be used by any gender, and can be used by all firefighters. And that's what we've been doing lately. One of the things that's critical in fire design is the accessibility from the living quarters down, in this case, down to the other level where the PPE is, so the response time for NFPA is nine, nine seconds? Nine seconds?
Ninety.
Ninety seconds, I'm sorry, ninety seconds. And ninety seconds.
Don't touch.
Oh, don't touch, I didn't do anything. Jeez, sorry about that. Ninety seconds. So when you'll see at the other station in the, at the current location, the one-story seems to be the most effective way to do that, and we're having more requests for one-story stations. They just, here on this particular site, there wasn't enough real estate to really do just a one-story complete station. I'm afraid to touch anything at this point, so. Forward, please. One of the things, in talking to, to the fire, to chiefs and to David, we were, this is a concept, we talked about what this would look like, there was, there was a desire to keep it in a sort of a contemporary New England, that we weren't going to do something, at least, and we'll talk about the budget in a minute, that was going to be like, you know, wood siding or stuff like that. It's, it's a masonry, mostly building on the fireside, I'm afraid to touch this now. We did show some siding, but this would not be vinyl siding, this would be cement board, just to bring a little bit of difference and a little bit of variation to the facade. Again, this is just a concept, it's not really meant to be a construction document by any means, but it does give an idea of the massing of the building and how fire and police do have kind of their own identities within the overall facility, which, which everybody felt was, was important. Next, please. And then in, in the back here, again, it's just a concept, in the back you can see that deck which is outside here, which is over the Sally port right here, and, and the evidence intake. So that gives you an idea of the overall concept for this. When we get into SCIMAG design, we're going to be looking, there's a hundred ways to do this. We looked at many, many other ways to do it as well, but this gives you just a general idea of, of the scale and the massing as a two-story building. Next, please. So the budget, I don't know if you can see that, I, I'm going to refer to my sheet. So in doing the conceptual budgets for all three options, we have on staff, we, as a consultant, we have a professional cost estimator. He's based out of Bedford, New Hampshire, I'm doing multiple projects with him, similar to this throughout New Hampshire and Southern Maine. We look at this as, I think, David, you mentioned this, as a mid-level construction that's going to be mostly masonry, steel frame, something very durable. Some communities are building, you know, some smaller communities are building buildings that my last twenty years that are made from wood construction and so forth, kind of like a big house. We didn't, from talking to everybody that we spoke to, the desire to do something a little more durable and permanent than that, so without getting overly excited about doing very expensive construction. This is a very durable facility, I think, David, again, you mentioned this should last, again, the current facility is forty-six years old now, I think. So this would last, when we did the planning and the programming, we're looking twenty years forward, minimum. Beyond twenty years, the windshield gets a little bit muddy, you know? But we don't, we're not designing for today, in other words, right? So basically, we had a range, we had a range of numbers that were in the three-twenty-five to three-fifty, we had a low and a high, within a reasonable, you know, schwag of that low to high. And, and by, and we also included a contingency for, for design because this is strictly a concept, include the contractors' overall general conditions fees, fees of a construction manager if you go the CM route, and that led to approximately, I don't know if you can see this, do you have paper that shows you this in front of you? Yes?
With the lights on.
Because I know it's hard to read there. Over approximately ten point seven on the low and about eleven point five five eight on the high, and then putting on the soft costs that go with that, which is architectural fees, geotech, engineering, permitting fees, builder's written insurance, I'm not going to read through all of that, some furniture, things like that, twenty percent's about a reasonable number for a facility like this. You're coming out with a total number on the low end of about twelve point nine and on the high end about thirteen point eight, I'm just rounding a little bit. Also, and there's a breakdown between what is the police and what is the fire. Those are numbers are for twenty twenty-two, and we, as, again, David mentioned this already, but we figured that, well, this goes for a warrant, let's say in March, and it, you know, successful, which we all hope it will be, it would take, you know, pretty much the remaining part of the year to do final design, construction documents, and be able to actually buy the project out, whether it's through CM or general contractor bid in the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, Q1, which would be probably more like February, March. So working with Mark Jobin, our estimator, the escalation, we've been seeing escalations of over nine percent the last two years, you know? Partly because lack of labor, partly because of lumber and other material shortage in the supply lines. So a lot of our clients are asking about that escalator, so this escalator is a fifteen percent, one-five roughly between now and end of Q1 of twenty twenty-four, which is roughly eighteen months or, or six quarters of escalation. Are you with me? Yes? Okay. The, the police also asked to have as an alternate, the ability to have a carport, not fully enclosed, but a carport, over thirteen vehicles on the site plan, the one closest to the building. That has to do with the fact that we're in a, you know, we're in northern New England, and the chiefs can speak to the fact that you don't want to come out of a, go out on a call or go out on a patrol and have to, you know, clear necessarily two feet of snow or ice off your car. We are actually getting a lot more requests for that. I'm working with three other municipalities in New Hampshire, some are around here, some are farther north in New Hampshire, and everybody's been asking about some covered, not enclosed, but covered parking, not for every vehicle, but for some patrol vehicles, okay? What's not included are moving costs. The beauty of this approach is that there's no temporary facilities for fire, they would just move part of their crew here and apparatus, and the police would just move, there's no temporary facilities, you just, you build it and they will come, kind of thing, you know, so, okay? Can I go to the next one?
Any questions?
I was just going to wait till.
Okay.
Okay.
There are three percent.
Oh, yes. So all these projects, the, both new construction projects, thank you, David, I'm sorry, both this one and the new fire, which would, one of the options on Court Street, will be designed to the new State of New Hampshire Energy Code, which just got adopted in the last few months. We, it wasn't really clear to us whether the town wants to do a lead facility or not, but generally by using good design standards, and we're very sustainable, friendly, Lavalley-Brenzlinger actually is a leader in New Hampshire in sustainability design, it would be somewhere close to what a current LEED Silver level would be. There was a question made about net zero, the reality about net zero is it's difficult to put a number to it until you understand how are you going to reach that by actually doing actual final design, because there's a lot of ways to get there. But in talking to multiple estimators and also a few general contractors, and a couple, a couple of construction managers, the feeling was that it's about three to four percent to make a net zero ready. And the nice thing about that, however, is that this is not a condominium building or a shopping center, you're going to own this building for, you know, forty to fifty years, and the payback tends to be in that twelve to sixteen year, seventeen year range. Again, depends what steps you do to get to net zero, but generally the payback is pretty aggressive, given the fact that you're going to own this building for a long time. Okay? All right, next, please. So the next thing is the renovation of the existing building. So we were asked to look at the renovation, and, you know, we wasn't, we would, to be frank with you, we didn't want to just look at it to say, well, we got, we're going to spend four million dollars no more, including soft costs, so four million all in, and not really sure what we could really do for that. This is a conceptual level study, so what we did, working closely with Chief Wilking and Deputy Chief Paizan, is we looked at the program, the space program, and we wanted to see how it fit into this facility, once the police moves to, to their new building, right? And some of your operations move also to Continental. So basically, I'm almost afraid to touch this now. Basically, the building footprint doesn't really change. The only thing we looked at, which is an alternate in the budget, was to create a spot for the historic steam engine, which currently is housed near the recreation department in that, but I'm, I'm sure you know where it is, in, in that one-story building, which may, may not be around. So the idea was to try to provide a home for it here. This doesn't really change the parking there, it doesn't really change much of anything outside the building. Okay? Next, please. So I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. We, we worked really closely, John Adams and I, from my office, and worked very closely with Chief Wilking and Deputy Chief Paizan, in trying to understand how the program could fit in here with reasonably a limited amount of actual reconfiguration. And what you see here is the areas in, in white are the ones that remain the same, and the ones, whoop, can you go back, please? I'm not sure what happened there. The areas in red are fire department, the addition, which is an option, is in the lower part here, which is for the steam engine. And, and the circulation is shown in yellow. So basically, the fire also had in the program a, a smaller EOC and training room, and this is where we're currently dispatches and booking intake in the Sally port. So we, that area does have to be, you know, reconfigured. We also have to look at some areas that are adjacent to the apparatus base to provide the proper level of support, decontamination, and warm space, right, chief, that we needed, which currently the fire station does not have. When this station was designed, you know, forty-five, six, seven years ago, that was not a thing. You know, it's just only been a thing for what you say, chief, by the last ten years with NFPA? Yeah. So we had to do some of that, but we were very judicious in how we did it. Next, please. This exciting image, it just shows in dash lines some of the changes that would have to be made to the existing booking, this is the holding cells, the Sally port, the intake processing, and this is dispatch. Some of that would have to be reconfigured for this to really work for fire in that first floor. Next, please. Oh, there is one thing, I'm sorry, you go back, I apologize, Dave. One of, one more. One of the things that we did is that is one very large piece of apparatus, which barely fits in, in the bays, and Chief Wilking can tell you mirrors have been a problem, and it's barely fits. So we just took the repair bay, which is here, showed widening that so you can get a truck in there, the big apparatus, without, you know, possibly damaging what is, what, how, what is this, how many hundreds of thousands is that piece of equipment?
A million dollars.
It's a million-dollar piece of equipment, so. So anyway, thank you, David, and you can go forward, I just wanted to show you that, that, that. So upstairs, what we did, again, we were very judicious in working with the chief and deputy chief. Everything in white, which are the living quarters, bunk rooms were going to stay, we just, some upgrades to the locker rooms, fitness area, trying to create the appropriate firehouse design. And then in the area where the police offices basically are right now, I think Chief Paul sits right here, that, those are renovated to meet the requirement of, of fire. And that area has been renovated multiple times, I believe, Chief Paul, in already. It, it just is very idiosyncratic, just for police right now. The fire program is a little bit different, so we just really wanted to see if it fit, and, and it does. Next, next, please. So this just shows you where we had to do some, looking at some wall removal, things like that, but wherever we could keep stuff, we kept it, just, again, trying to be as judicious as possible. I think the town owed itself to find out whether the fire program could fit in this building the way it needs to fit for twenty years out, you know, and, and it does. This is just an existing building, you already know what it looks like, so. This is a three-dimensional view, next, please. So I'm going to walk you through the budget real quick. So we were given a direction that we wanted to give this to four million or under, including soft costs, and what we did was we looked at this, and I'm looking at the upper part of, of this up here, that we looked at the fact that there's very little site work related to the project, at least at a conceptual level. The apparatus base have very minor upgrades and changes, and then the remaining part of the square footage of the building, we divided into two categories, one was And what we did was we looked at this, and I'm looking at the upper part of, of this up here, um, that we looked at the fact that there's very little site work related to the project, at least at a conceptual level. The apparatus base have very minor upgrades and changes. And then the remaining part of the square footage of the building, we divided into two categories. One was more extensive renovation, which would include removing some of the walls as we showed, and doing some new construction, internal construction. And then the other part, equal amount, was mostly cosmetic, like paint, carpet, flooring, possibly a new ceiling, maybe some new lighting, things like, like that. Um, and have the contingencies built in to that, as well as the GC conditions and the CM fees. And then for the project's soft costs, it's quite a bit lower there because as you see, the assumptions made is that sort of the apparatus, the equipment, the furnishings, things that are there would actually be reused. So, the soft costs are really limited to mostly architectural engineering fees and permitting fees and a few things like that. Um, the, to, we also looked at what it would be like to replace the current mechanical systems and plumbing electrical systems in the building distribution, because they're really, even though they're not forty-seven years old necessarily, each one of them, they're not really in the greatest condition. They're okay, but looking forward for ten, fifteen years, they need some, some, you know, maybe replacement frankly. So, that, we had a number for that of one point three. Um, um, some of the upgrades are in the base number of under, of four million under, but it's mostly reconfiguration, things like that, not replacing systems, right? Um, then we had the, the addition for the steam engine, about a hundred eighty thousand dollars, that's in that corner of the blue area. Um, we had replacement of all the windows and exterior doors, the windows are older, I mean, they're not energy efficient. That was about three hundred eighty thousand dollars. Um, adding an elevator, a two-stop elevator to go to the second level where the fire bunk rooms are, there's no elevator in the building now, um, that's about three hundred eighty thousand dollars, because you have to cut the shaft, put the elevator in as a machine room. It's not just the elevator itself, the elevator's a hundred thousand, but the work that's related to it. And then upgrading the exterior envelope to be more energy efficient, that would be about three hundred seventy thousand. That would basically, what it really means is you really skin the inside of the building with another layer of insulation and so forth to make it a higher R-value, because the building was built in the mid-seventies and it was built to that technology, right? Um, one of the things we looked at was how you could do it without having to move fire out, because part of fire would move chief to Continental, and we saw that as possibly a three-phase implementation where you, you would renovate the parts the police would vacate first, you know, use that as swing space for fire, renovate other parts of fire, so maybe three total phases. That does add to the cost, and it's baked into that, that four million to do the phasing. Trying to think of anything else here of any real importance. Um, yeah, it doesn't include relocation costs or moving the antenna system. I know the, the police has got a budget for moving the antenna to Continental, and the antenna that's there now, I'd assume would make, would remain, because you would need that, so. All right. Last but not least, is the new fire station at, excuse me, I got some water here.
At Court State.
So, here we were tasked with doing a one-story fire facility. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, we're seeing much more of a direction, wherever a site allows to do a one-story facility, because it really enhances response time and movement of fire personnel to respond to a call. Is that a correct statement? Yes. So, here, we also try to be respectful of the current parking lot. We, we actually are very, very miserly in our, in our approach to spending money. We, we know every dollar counts. In this situation here, uh, this is, most of this parking's existing, very little upgrade in this area. This is the fire parking, it's, it's secured area for fire staff, public parking's right here. Um, the apparatus bays are, apparatus bays are here now, but part of the apron is there now, it's hard to say whether we could reuse that part of that apron or not, but at least we kept it pretty much what our curb cut is now. Additional parking for fire staff here, and that meets to all the parking requirements. Um, on, on this side, we show, we show EMS ambulance apron, which is smaller. Um, so we split the, the ambulance EMS away from the, the main, um, large apparatus. Public would park here and come in. This corner area where it's parking now, which used to be, I believe, a gas station, right David? Used to, yeah. That would be a nice little green space right at the corner, which would be really nice, you could do something very nice there, a little plaza, could do something very nice, it's a very nice corner, um, because they don't need that for parking anymore, and we did that on purpose to, to open that corner up. Next please. Um, so, um, basically, it's a very, very economical, very tight plan. You've got the four large apparatus bases, this is the million dollar piece of apparatus right here. You've got four, unfortunately the dot is red on the red, but these are the EMS ambulance bays. It works really well with larger apparatus rolling out to this side. Um, there is a public lobby entrance, this is a training EOC with its own bathroom and its own little, it's self-sufficient, it's a little kitchenette, little bathroom, there's a public bathroom here. This is fire administration, including fire permit, including permitting, plan review. We worked very closely with Chief Wilking and Deputy Chief Pizan on how public would access parts of this versus the parts that were, you know, would be secured and private. Back here is the actual firehouse, the bunk rooms, day room, kitchen, locker rooms. This is laid the same way out, where you've got the hot zone is the apparatus base, this is the, the warm zone, and this, and once you get in here, where the living area is, that's the cold zone, meaning that you're totally decontaminated as you enter that area, you're not carrying contaminants on your body into the kitchen or the living spaces. Last but not least, these are just some general ideas. Again, we're looking at something New England contemporary, you, you could design it a hundred different ways, but this is a concept. We're looking more at scale. This is actually what the corner would be of the two main streets. This is that green area that we talked about, EMS bays, ambulance EMS bays, large apparatus bays. This is really the other corner, and these are offices, living quarters, and an employee and staff entrance in the back for fire staff. So, it, it's a, it's a, because the one-story, the profile's not as big actually as a current building that's there now. Next please. So, last but not least, this budget. Um, so, this budget has a lot of similarities to the initial police substation where we had a low and a high range, um, very similar number for that. Um, the site development number is a little bit higher than it would have been on the state of renovation, because we are doing actual work. You gotta demolish the current building, you gotta work some of the parking lot back, you gotta do some other things on the street. This is really, as a, as a conceptual budget, includes all the key parts, including design contingency and a contractor's condition, general conditions, the, the CM fee, if you hire CM or GC fee. Um, and then the soft costs are twenty percent, more like the police and fire substation, and I'm not gonna read through everything that's there, but includes a new backup generator. In the other, you know, renovation, the generator stays, all that stuff stays the way it is. Um, includes a backup generator, includes some signage, includes furniture fixtures, includes some of the fire equipment, like an extractor, kitchen equipment for the commercial kitchen and the firehouse, things of that nature. So, that comes out to about ten point eight on the low end, eleven point five on the high end. And then the same thing with the escalation to quarter one of 2024, um, as we did on the first one, and you can see the escalation there, like I said, it's approximately fifteen percent. The, the alternates were really just making things a little bit larger. We worked very hard with the chief and deputy chief to cut the footage down as much as possible to keep it down, but make it functional for twenty years plus in the future. The other alternates were really making the base five foot deeper, that was one, the larger apparatus base, not, not the ambulance base. Making the hallways an extra foot wider, um, yeah, from five to six feet, providing the steam engine as an alternate, that, to provide an area where you can have the display for the steam engine and historic steam engine, and that was approximately four hundred fifty-seven thousand. And then the net zero, again, a three to four percent, uh, would be an option to, to make the building net zero ready, beyond good, you know, solid energy-saving design, which just would be because it's a brand-new building. Did I lose you? Are you with me?
No, I'm with you.
All right. That's it.
Okay. Before, um, I know I want to give folks an opportunity to speak, you know, we probably have members from the public or if the chiefs want to speak, but any questions from the board for Bob before we open it up?
Well, I think they're all for him, but I'm not sure. Okay, just bear with me. I'm gonna, you okay if I keep that off for a minute, so I'm not fighting with Bob over my... So, first question I have is how many fire personnel on Continental, how many fire personnel does that provide for?
So, I'm gonna have the chief answer that, because we have a certain number of bunk rooms, but he, but, no, it's okay, but, but he, he and I, he and I work very closely together on that, so I don't want to misspeak on something, so.
So, initially moving in, we're gonna have four firefighters downtown, and there's five bunk rooms available, and we're gonna have three firefighters at Continental, and there's four bunk rooms and a flex space. So, we're gonna have an officer quarters that twenty-five years down the road, if the town decided to staff that with another, another body, another person, we'd have room for five without taking space. So, so initially, there's five and five, we're staffed at seven today, um, so you can see five and five is up to ten employees there. So, again, there's some built-in space, Bob's done a great job in allowing us to...
That was, you answered the question and the reason why I asked it. Um, so, future expansion, I'm still on Continental, is there enough land there for future expansion of the fire, um, substation if necessary?
Um, so...
For equipment-wise?
Right, so, so let me answer that in detail, because so, in doing that layout, at one time, there was talk of a third bay, and it could be done by expanding it to the left as you look at the plan. But in talking with the chief and deputy chief, by providing one large apparatus and then a, a double-loaded, smaller apparatus like ambulance, a fire vehicle, a response vehicle, they felt that that was adequate. Now, it, the police program again, looks twenty years out at least or more, so theoretically there would not be any expansion. You could expand into the public parking if you wanted to for police, but for fire, um, I believe that we reached the idea that the two bays were adequate, is that correct? Yes.
But to answer your question, we would lose that parking to the left.
Yeah, let me...
So, so it is available if you needed it?
The spaces, we'd have to move parking to the green instead of the red.
Here.
Access point.
Right.
We could expand.
The nice thing about this property is, as I mentioned like half hour ago, I think, is that you have, in this situation, you have three means of egress and ingress out of the site, one, two, three, and if for some reason this was to be another bay, you could still put a drive, you could still have a driveway there.
Do you want me to continue, Mr. Chair, or give someone else a chance?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, my next question is, why secured parking? That to me would add an extra cost to this project. Is there a reason for this that I'm not understanding?
Um, I, I can address that, I think Chief Pollan should...
So, there's two security questions I have. I, I really want to understand why we need those security entrances and, and extra gate rooms, if you will, and why we need security so the fire department can't get beyond an access point.
That's in the building, I'll address that in a minute as well. So, I'm gonna address these, and if Chief Pollan wants to jump in, welcome to do it. So, one of, the thing that has really become an issue in the last five to ten years has been the security and safety of police officers coming to work or leaving work, police, um, non-sworn, non-bad staff, as well as dispatch. There's been all kinds of incidents across the country, including here in New Hampshire. So, current design for public safety is to provide separate public parking, separate parking for police staff, whether it's police vehicles, which are going on the street, or police staff, whether it's sworn officers or non-bad staff, like administrative staff or dispatch staff for nine-one-one calls. Um, every facility that we're doing right now is following that guideline throughout the northeast. Um, there, that's, so that's why we do that. The second question you had was, do you want to add anything to that, chief?
Sure.
Because I was gonna answer the other question.
Yeah, I, it's better to have...
Yeah, so just envision, uh, very basic, envision an officer beginning his or her shift and going out to that cruiser with a firearm, with their duty bag, and a civilian that may want to do harm parks right next to him, or is waiting in the car next to him. Or how about we're bringing a prisoner in and you're coming to the police department just to, to do fingerprints or to get a pistol permit, and you park back there because it's open, and now you're intermingling with a prisoner potentially, right? Um, a lot of expensive equipment in the police cars, laptops, again firearms, uh, so we just don't want, and it's a fence, it's a fence with a gate, so I don't know what the actual cost of, would, would be.
It's not that major.
But it's not that major of a cost to have that security.
I'm trying to be proactive with educating people and them understanding why we're looking at security gates where we don't have them now. We have a separate parking and all that. I just think it's important to get those questions and answers out there.
Yes, very good.
And then understanding.
And we don't have it now, and we do have people that are walking, and they don't know that the front entrance is kind of obscure, so they'll walk up to the back to the Sally Port and they're kind of, am I in the right place, am I not? So, this would prevent that.
Thank you.
And, and the other question is a very good question, that had to do with the layout of the second floor and the first floor too, but, so, on the first floor, fire can access that lobby vestibule, public lobby, and that larger community training space that's on the first floor. On the second level, fire can access the gym, fitness, agility area. Beyond that point, they're not able to access the secured police facilities, and that has to do with the fact that, let's say, I'm a fireman and I have a cousin who's done, you know, perpetrated a crime, and there's evidence, or there's something, or there's an arresting officer that's next door to me, um, you cannot get Kalia certification without a separation, you cannot be secured in a police environment if even fire would go into that area. So, that, that's, that's one of the key things of designing a combined facility.
Could you explain the certification that you just said?
Yeah, Kalia certification is something that a lot of departments that we work with are pursuing or they have done, and that is basically is a certification that has a series of guidelines, um, and not only in the safety and security of the officers, but also community outreach and community relations and things of that nature. I think the chief can speak to that, but, but...
And the benefit of being certified for that would be good to understand too. Thank you.
I'm not saying they're, they're doing that, I'm just saying that's part of it in the future if they wanted to do that.
No, that's good, we need to get this all out there and have everyone understand all the nuances. Can I keep going? I have a few more. You want to answer that before I...
Accreditation is, uh, it's gonna become the norm across the country. Some states already mandate it. Uh, New Hampshire is now about to get state accreditation. We received congressional directed funding to, for ourselves to get Kalia accredited, um, and that's just gonna be a best practice going forward. All agencies are gonna be eventually have some form of accreditation. And that just really assures you that we have tested and true policies, our officers are following those policies, and, you know, everything's in place, from supervision all the way down.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Only a few more, I promise.
Go ahead.
Okay, so now I'm on the fire department. Um, in the plan, has anyone thought of where we might put if, the fire department, whether it's renovated or a new building, where we could locate a room for the police department to have a presence downtown?
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty, I mean, I think in either of those options, it could be a small touchdown space, and that's, there's not unusual to have in a community, have a police touchdown space that's... have a police touchdown space that's probably just a smaller office or something. Usually they have a separate outside door, and again, not accessible really from the firehouse.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we keep that in the, at least in the planning. I apparently, we haven't decided that that's not, but I still want to. We can't use a well right room. I'm gonna keep repeating that one. But I do think it's important personally that we have at least a room where there's an office area for at least one or two police officers if needed for whatever. Elevator on the second floor in renovation? I can't remember, we've gone through so much. What's on the second floor if we renovate on the...
So, so the elevator in a firehouse is a discussion that happens in every community that has more than one story firehouse, and they're doing renovation or building new because theoretically for the firefighters, men and women who are firefighters, you really can't be physically handicapped and be a firefighter. So most of that second floor, you know, in the current building, at least that first, here, when you use the pointer, Dave, I can't tell you what's gonna happen when they do, but all of this is the firehouse where, including bunks and locker rooms and toilet rooms and a physical fitness area. The office area is over here, and that's close to where the police office, police administration is. And, you know, those are basically the chief, deputy chief, people of that nature, captains, fire prevention officer, actually they're downstairs for the public, but theoretically no public would ever go up there, okay? Public would not go up there. It's a firehouse only. You could decide as a town whether you want to put an elevator in, and we just broke it out a separate number, given the limitation of the 4 million.
Okay.
But the public area on the first floor will be fully accessible.
So there's not gonna be any, this is something that, Chief, if I could follow up with you on this one. So when you and I had a meeting a while back, and there is, there are some rooms that get used up there as it stands now, and no way for anyone with any kind of limitations to get up there without going the stairs. So are you comfortable if there's a renovation? I know, sorry to put you on the spot, but I think it's important to cover.
I'm gonna ask Dave Sharple to go back to another picture. The short answer is, we are absolutely trying to work within the $4 million budget. And a $4 million budget may or may not include an elevator. I believe it's important. We have people come in to pay their ambulance bill, want to see the fire chief, want to discuss something, they're gonna need to go upstairs. So I think the elevator is gonna be part of the main focus of that fire station, whether it's renovation or obviously the one story building, we won't need it. That picture right there speaks volumes to my concerns of a renovation. I live in this town, I understand what we're trying to do, and I fully support if this is the direction we want to go. But when you look at that apparatus floor compared to what we have at the substation, there is no place to move on that apparatus floor. There's no place today, there'll be no place tomorrow, and there'll be no place 20 years from now. There's no place to train on that floor, there's no place to do any function without pulling a vehicle outside. Major drawback to a renovation. The dollar value looks good. I think the upstairs functions perfectly. I think the guys are excited about crew rooms and a real gym and all of that. It's the apparatus features of that renovation concerns me. I'm not opposed to it, it's a concern, and the elevator would be just another one. But we were tasked with, Bob was tasked with bringing that forward, and that's where we are. That's why we have some of the different iterations, if you will, and the add-on pieces.
Yeah. I just want to say that on the other, also, somebody coming to the fire station, the first floor with the, you know, the public areas which are here will be fully accessible. There's a bathroom showing, so I mean, anybody who is to come there to meet with the chief or go to a meeting in this meeting room down here or see the fire prevention officer can do that without having to go upstairs.
Okay. So thank you. You answered about the apparatus question before I could ask, one more. I promised just one more.
We are here to ask questions, so don't apologize.
I know, but could you explain a little bit more about the three-phase approach?
Yeah, I mean, again, this is a concept, you know, we're not a schematic designer, design development or any things, but this is a, not a 10,000 foot, but a like a thousand foot level look, right? So when you look at this, and I mentioned this, is that police moves out here and also upstairs, and you can renovate these areas first, and also, I don't know if you can go to the next level, David, I'm sorry. Yep, and you can renovate this, renovate it to what it has to be, use it for swing space, you move stuff in there, then you renovate the next piece. The beauty of this is that the, most of the bunk room area, the current kitchen, the living, part of the living areas here, and also on the first floor, David, I'm sorry, keep jumping back and forth, but in some of the, most of the apparatus areas remain mostly not heavily affected. So you, we just thought, looked at it and said, you know, three-phase kind of looks about right. Because you don't want to, you want to have these guys move out. Now, in the other option, they have to move out because the building's going away. They have to move out for X amount of time.
What would that look like? Don't know yet. Okay. Thank you.
There were several things looked at, such as other facilities in town, but, but for the renovation, it seemed reasonable to assume that kind of a three-phase approach.
Okay.
Now, having said that, I mean, they're contiguous, they're not, nobody's coming doing work and leaving for three years. I mean, they're, you know, contiguous same project, right? So.
Okay, that's it for me for right now. Thank you.
Selectwoman Cowan?
I'm interested in the energy conversation that I suspect we're about to have, and then I'm also interested in what Julie is thinking.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Are you looking at me?
I am.
I guess my first thought was, we've been really fortunate that we've been able to squeeze the number of years out of that building we currently have, and I really mean squeeze, and with the changes in technology and et cetera, I mean, I have no problem with the new station and substation. The question comes up with the lifetime of the renovated building versus newly built building for the fire department. And you hear the, you know, these are estimates about whether it's 20 years for renovation, 40 years for a new building, and, you know, which one is penny wise and pound foolish? And to me, it says, you know, 40 years is great, you know, the debt will be, you know, won't last as long as my retirement. Or, yeah. So I, that's kind of where I am. Selectwoman Belanger asked a lot of the questions that I had also, or explained, got you to explain them. I just have a, want to ensure during this process, this design process, that we're really thinking about staffing and technology for the next 20 or 40 years because, you know, as we know, the fire department has been having to hire more personnel because of, you know, the different need, licensing needs or what, I can't think of the word, but, and to make our, you know, to make it safer for our employees. So I just want to be sure that we're really taking a look at, you know, is one extra room enough for 20 years? I know we can't predict the future, but it sounds to me a little less, it's gonna be more than that. So we need to think about that more. And I'll be interested in listening to the energy costs. I think we already did a level one energy review 2008, I think, and highlighted the things that needed to be fixed and changed, and, you know, the windows are one, air conditioning, all of that infrastructure updates would go a long way. I know we can try to reuse what's there, but they're not efficient systems that we have there right now. So that's, that's part of the, you know, going green conversation. For me, that leans to either a whole new set of HVAC or a new building. So, you know, I've got to start weighing these kind of, these kind of things in the costs, and my computer's gonna die very soon, so I have to go get my plug. So I, I, so I guess I'm back, and then there's the whole unknown of where does the fire department go when we're, well, we have the, if we do a whole new building? Where do we have the trucks? We could go to the old fire station, which is the senior center, but there's not enough room there. Guess those are my only comments. It's just for us to be looking in the conversation about what's gonna be the biggest bang for the buck for, is it a 40-year building that, or we estimate is a 40-year building, or a 20-year renovation? And having come from the world of architecture, I know that 20 years is pretty low for buildings built this day. It was, it was low when, or high, actually, when I was working in the 80s. You know, a 20-year renovation is, surprises me a little bit.
Thank you, Selectwoman Gilman. So before, before you leave, sir, just, these are, these are some of the questions, you know, we, we come prepared, we read your memo, and it was, it was a great presentation, but we also, most of us meet periodically individually with the chiefs, with staff, and we're fortunate that we live in a community that really has their finger on the pulse. A lot of these questions and comments that we ask and make tonight are based on feedback we get.
Yeah, good questions.
So that's why we ask these questions, because this presentation's not just for, this is for the folks watching. We're asking questions behalf of ourselves, but also of the community. And so take, take note of that when, when you have public meetings. I mean, it's great to look at the budget, it's great to look at this room and that room, but these are also some questions and concerns folks are gonna ask, you know, when you're putting your presentations together. That's something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Good questions. I just want to say on the renovation option that, you know, in the lower dollar value, that's sort of four and under, it's really, it's really a shorter term solution. I think if you're gonna be in a building longer duration, 20 years is thrown out as an example, you are definitely looking at upgrading the mechanicals and really doing something to the envelope to make it more energy efficient than it was in 1976, you know? And that building was built, is built very solid, but it also has a lot of idiosyncrasies in the way it's laid out, you know? So, because it's a combined building, so, and it was also done to the way policing and fire was done back then, right, Chief? You know, 45, 46 years ago. So, so I think we're very keenly aware, I would say that throughout this process, we've gotten great feedback, not just from the chiefs, but also from David and the F A C and, and from Russ. We definitely have not been working in a vacuum, and I would also say that the concerns that the community of Exeter has, pretty much every community we work with cares about efficiency, the cost, you know, sustainability. Those are all things that every community we work with pretty much cares about that. So.
Terrific.
Thank you very much for your time.
So I'd like to open it up to the public. I know we have two members of the energy committee here.
I'm Renee Allen, Chair of the Energy Committee, and it's very exciting what we've seen here and the concept. The Energy Committee feels like it's a good time to be in on the ground level in these plans. We really like the, the add-on of the net zero ready. Not quite sure exactly the parameters of that, but we're at the base, so it's a good start. I think that we would like to pledge our support, the Energy Committee, to work on efficiency measures in this building and clean energy. We love to work with the police chiefs, pleased to work again with Dave Sharple and Kristen Murphy. And as many of you know, there was recently signed the Inflation Reduction Act, which had many climate measures in it. And we, the Energy Committee will definitely be leaning heavily upon clean energy in New Hampshire, the advocates at the New Hampshire State House, to track down these monies, grants, rebates, incentives to apply them to this project, to get this payback period as short as possible. But it's very exciting to be in at the ground level of this type of a project, and thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Hi.
Hi.
Amy Farnham, Three Little River Road, also on the Energy Committee. So Renee spoke well for us. We are energy nerds for sure, and we want to see this, you know, it's a beautiful plan. All three of them are great plans. It does look like there's some flexibility maybe to do energy efficiency measures, that three to four percent to make that net zero ready. Can I ask what that means?
So, so again, just to be very clear. So, speaking of, yeah, never been told I was loud enough to ask anyone, but, so, so it's one thing to say that we were, these buildings are being, again, it's a concept. First of all, we're not doing schematic design, inner design development. So we had, there's some assumptions had to be made in doing the budgeting as to what levels we were gonna meet. So we did have conversations early on with David and the chiefs and F A C, and a lot of conduit came from David, from the F A C, and probably from you, Russ, because we asked, does this town want to have a lead gold facility, or does it, you know, or what does it want to do, right? And the answer was that we want to be energy efficient, but there wasn't a clear, you know, labeling, let's call it that, or a benchmark. Recently, New Hampshire just passed an energy code, okay? Literally in the last few months, which ups the R value and ups the design, R values and so forth for the, for buildings. So we would minimally meet that, but we'd look to be better than that. Now, that's just in the way the building's designed, not necessarily in any net zero applications. To do a real net zero calculation, we would have to run full energy models and understand exactly what steps we would take to be net zero, such as, you know, rooftop solar panels and, and geothermal or whatever it might be. We're not at that level. This is a concept design. So we try to do more is to try to capture what that additional cost might be to get the building to be net zero ready so that it can be net zero. So a lot of our clients now, a lot of our towns we're working with are either trying to, trying to build that in for the future so that when they can do it, they can just easily implement it. Maybe that's the best way I can explain it. So, so that, that was taken into account in that number. That number, the three to four percent is just a ballpark because we would need to really design the whole thing to really understand exactly how we would reach a net zero facility. This is a little bit different than our normal project because of police facilities 24/7, 365, it never sleeps, it's open all the time, constantly has to have 100% backup generation power in case of power failure. And a fire station in apparatus bays, when you open those doors in the middle of the winter, when it's 20 blowout, the temperature in there is gonna be basically at, you know, zero degrees within, you know, a minute or two, right, Chief? So, but the other parts of the facility are very highly energy efficient. So we're totally in sync with you folks. I just think that at a conceptual level, all we can do is kind of build some numbers to carry that idea through until we actually design, you know, the project. I think that's why we proposed that the current facility, which is still up on the screen, that an extended part of that renovation, which would go beyond that 4 million, would be to address the envelope and the mechanical systems, and the envelope would not just be the windows and the exterior doors, but actually the wall system around the building, which would mean that we would be basically skinning the inside of the building with additional, we just did that for two projects of the state of Maine up in Augusta. Both, both buildings were from the 50s. This is a little bit younger building than that. So, does that help?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I want to make sure I was very clear, so.
So I just want to, I just want to put a plug in, even though this is high level, I just want to make sure that it's on record that we are being considerate about roof lines, and, you know, I saw in one of the drawings, a hip roof, which isn't ideal for solar, and, you know, when we're looking at renovating the building on Court Street, you know, Bow Street or Bow, however you want to say, is south facing, you know, Bow and, and the, that's north facing. So if we were to do a renovation on that one, you know, just being considerate of the roof line, we talked about covered parking, you know, that's something that we could do solar on there, you know? We're looking at greening our fleet, you know, why not do covered parking and AV chargers and all of that? So I don't, I just don't want this to come down to necessarily like the function and then the people that want, you know, green things. Like this is... Like, this is something that should be combined, you know? Doing these things is looking towards the future, these things have a payback, as everybody knows, so it's not just sort of one or the other. I think that we can get them all together and, and have a nice payback, and it's one of the few things that does pay for itself, so I just want to put that on record. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. I'd like to just say, there, there are a lot of different players involved, obviously the town planner, the chiefs, facilities committee, the budget recommendations committee. I would strongly encourage the Energy Committee to be part of this plan, because if you look at the Energy Committee through the years, they have vigorously worked on energy-efficient initiatives that have been very successful in this town, and their results speak for themselves, so I would really encourage the Energy Committee to be a part of this.
Yeah, can I just add to that, that it's really going to be helpful when we're, to try to keep everyone who lives in town, our community, informed as it goes, and the whole energy part of this is going to be an important part of it, I believe, but we don't want to just spring it on as the last minute and have to tweak things. So, yeah, it's important, it's part of the conversation right from the beginning. Thank you.
Selectwoman Gilman?
I think I've said, said what I need. I, I agree with the Energy Committee being part of the discussion early on. With the facilities committee has already weighed in, but not on the particulars yet, and really, it's the chiefs that know how their programming works best, so like you said, it's, or as, as Farnham said, it's, we got to roll it all in together and make sure we're keeping everybody's information flowing back and forth, and the considerations, everybody's going to, you know, be aware of where compromises might need to be made, or where we can take opportunities to, take advantage of opportunities to, to please more people, keep the costs down. That's it.
Thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
I don't need to say anything that's already been said. My question more, more is, what are the next steps? What happens from here?
So, Mr. Dean, I think, does this go as a capital improvement project to the Budget Recommendations Committee?
Yes. Yeah, so we'll have to work out some of the rate impacts of the different scenarios, so we'll be discussing that with the BRC, and then the decision needs to be made ultimately as to whether this is ready for the warrant and in what, what format that would be.
I, I would suggest learning from the past. I know we've already had one public meeting that was sparsely attended, and I know the BRC has to go through their, you know, and they won't get to the final CIP meeting until November, and then come to the board in December, January, the public budget hearing, but I think maybe having some more meetings in the fall, or getting this out there to folks so that it's not sprung at the last minute as, like, one public hearing, you know, a month before deliberative session, and you're not going to have the final figures. I mean, that's, that's a given, but I mean, just to engage the community in conversation.
Yeah, another, another issue to try to wrap our collective heads around is also, are we okay with the renovation of the 20 Court Street building versus building new? Or is there another thought to that? Because that's obviously going to impact the final decision as to what might go to the warrant.
So, my, you know, I agree with you, but my point is, if we can have some of these public hearings before we have to make that decision, we can hear from the community as to what folks want.
Yes.
Or don't want.
Right.
And can I just throw one more thought out there? Is how the Parks and Rec Building on Court Street could be used as a temporary, some kind of temporary housing? I know it's a little odd, it's, it's, but we have it, it will be empty hopefully by then. How can that be utilized, if needed, for storage, for, you know, parking, some equipment? Hopefully, if it's, if we decide to go for a new fire department too, can, if we can get the timing, if the engines and stuff are out there during summertime, and not when, I know, Chief, you're laughing, but you know, I'm just trying to throw some thoughts out there. Also, if there's any updated information, just keep in mind that the planning board has their second CIP for the draft, and that is...
Thursday.
Thursday, at 6:30, so, I, I know, I'm just throwing it out there that that's there, so, yeah.
Okay, great. So no action tonight, just let's move forward and...
Unless there's some, something that the board feels strongly about with respect to some of the options that have been brought forward. I know we're, we're already pursuing the new police station with the substation. I don't know if the board had any further thoughts on the renovation versus the new, new construction with the fire, but...
I'm going to speak for myself and open it up to the board for discussion, but I mean, when it was brought forward this summer, we talked about, earlier this summer, we talked about moving ahead with Continental Drive and the, and, you know, keeping the present property for the fire. My, my personal opinion, I think at this point, we need to see, to let it go through the process, we need to see how the BRC feels, facilities, energy, the chiefs, public.
Yeah, I think that's right. I think that there was consensus from us about moving forward on this plan.
Yeah, I, I would like to know more, too, on the net zero part, if it's going to be, we, we want to know what's cost-effective, right? I mean, what, what are we going to get more for our dollar value? But are we going to get better results for the net zero if we go new? And, and we might be looking for a little bit more of a long-term payback on that, but I do think that there is going to be a, a financial savings, the more we look at that, I think it's going to be an important factor.
And there may be more available to us.
Right.
At federal level, state level.
Yeah.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Yeah, I, I'm, I agree with what's been said. We did, I think, go forward with the new, new police station and sub, fire substation. I think we need to take a really close look on the process of buildings, raising the current station and building something new, because the logistics of that are just going to be huge, and will add to the cost of a, of a new building, so it might make renovation the safer and more economic choice.
Mr. Sharple's?
Thank you. I, I just want to address that, because Rob alluded to it a couple of times, Bob, sorry, Bob alluded to it a couple of times. The, the, when we got the warrant to do what we did, the goal was to get to a point with a concept plan and a good number, reliable number, to take to the voters, to then proceed with final design and construction. Some of the answers there with net zero and so forth will occur during final design, which we don't have funding for at this time. So maybe there's an option, just spitballing here, is if, if, I, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, Russ, but I, I thought the impression was, is always to kind of split these up into potentially two warrant articles. If, if you went, went, moved forward with the police and the substation out on 6 Continental, and then you could also add final design, because then that would get us to some funding for final design, that would answer all your questions, because we, we, I don't, we, we can't answer those specific questions until we get additional funding.
And I have heard the, what Bob has said tonight in terms of the concept plan, so I know the board has a good feel for where we're at in the process, and based on that, are we, are we ready to move something forward, and what does that look like?
I think yes. I mean, did I miss, I'm not sure if I missed something, but I mean, we, we already had agreed, we were going to, we wanted to go forward with 6 Continental for the police and the, and the substation.
Right.
We had talked about doing something at the existing public safety for fire. We've had two options presented this evening, and now maybe a third, so, I mean, I, I'm not understa, I mean, aren't we moving forward with that? And then it's going to go to budget?
Yes, the, the police and the, and the fire substation, absolutely, and we would, we would walk through the budget process with the two fire options that have been talked about tonight.
Right.
So that's what's on the table.
And then the Budget Recommendations Committee is going to look at all of the, they're going to look at the numbers, they're going to dive deeper than we did tonight, because that's what they do, and then they're going to come back and make a recommendation to the select board, presumably so will the facilities committee, as well as possibly the Energy Committee, right?
I think you have it right.
And then the select board's going to make a recommendation to you, to the voters, to put a warrant together, and we'll go to deliberative session, and we'll see where it goes from there.
That's the process.
That's, that's where I thought we were tonight. But in the meantime, I think we still need to have some public input, because we've got some great committees and some great committee members, but I think we, we've, we've learned from the past that when we keep the public out of it until the last minute, till after budget, till after the select board, we, you know, we find things out a little too late. So that, that's all I'm saying, is I think that the public should be part of...
Yep, fair enough.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Because we, we went out, we tried to, you know, solicit a lot of public, got, you know, sent to all our committees, all our volunteers, public, the website, so forth. It wasn't very well attended, that public forum we had across, I mean, you know, handful of people did show up, but are, is there any, I mean, would this forum maybe before select, I mean, I'm trying to figure out, where do we hold this? How do we get, how do we get interest?
I don't think there's no perfect answer, and we've seen it before, but I think the more you make it available, is it at a select board meeting, we can have...
I guess that's what matters.
Some sort of a, you know, discussion like we've had tonight, but open it up a little bit more publicly, advertise it. We could do another one like we did. We could utilize Bob and his staff and Channel 22, and I mean, all that stuff, even if you don't watch TV, it's all over public, social media, he's done a great job. So, the answer is no, there's no perfect way to get people...
Well, I guess I'm, I'm, yeah, I was just asking if the select board was amenable, if we, if we also added like an agenda item for public input on the, on the PD at a meeting.
Again, I'm going to speak for myself, I'd rather have that than six months later saying, nobody told us anything.
Great. I'll, I'll get on it then.
Can I add? Just maybe putting it on our agenda a few times and, and see, all we can do is invite them, we can go door-to-door, right? So, well, you've tried, but the other thing is, we could do it, again, right after the budget committee gives their recommendation, and just try to do it as many times as we can. We can keep the door open, keep an open invitation, if you will, but yeah, it's a good point.
We could work on the web presence as well of this project. We might be able to give it some special space on our website, some easy, easy access to the project, some project descriptions, let people know what we're doing.
And, you know, here's another idea, is maybe we could, the next communications committee meeting, let's ask them what their suggestions are. I mean...
Happy to, happy to do that.
I'm filming for Molly, so bring it up.
They've made some great suggestions in the past, I mean, I think it's all hands on deck.
I'm going to get it in my calendar here.
There's not one good, good answer.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not being, I'm really using my calendar to make a note. Okay, when is that, Molly?
So, Selectwoman Gilman, I'm not putting you on the spot, but you're not next to me, so I just want to make sure one last time if you have anything else to add before we move on.
No, I think, you've said it all, it's as many avenues of communication as possible. I think some, some larger presentation, this was really good, I really love how our TV folks, Bob and the TV folks, have been able to put the drawings up on the screen, so everyone can see them rather up on a poster board on a easel, so that's a big help, and maybe, you know, we're doing TSAs or public service announcements for the different committees, maybe we need to do one to walk through what we're trying to do here.
I think that's right. Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment before we move on? Great, well, thank you for your presentation. Chiefs, thank you for your presence tonight. Deputy Chief, Mr. Sharple's?
Thank you for your time, those were great questions, I liked that.
Thank you.
Renee, Amy, thank you. Okay, moving on to regular business. Madam Clerk, we have several abatements and one solar exemption. I don't know if you have those in front of you, or if you'd like one of us to do it from here?
I have them in front of me, absolutely.
Okay, now I'll turn it over to you.
Enlarge for easy reading. Mr. Chair, if, with the consensus of the board, I would like to make one motion for four of the abatements, as they are for the same property?
Please do.
Okay, I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 139, in the following amount in years. Hold on a second. Sorry, I thought I had my video on. There we go. Okay, so Lot 104, MAP 104, Lot 79, you know, 139, $786.90 for the tax year 2019, $830.29 for 2020, $819.31 for 2021, and $423.53 for 2018.
Second?
So motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Blanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes 4-0, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a solar exemption for, oh, wait, a tax abatement for MAP 64, Lot 105, Unit 15, in the amount of $260 for tax year 2022.
Second?
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Blanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes 4-0.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 83, Lot 25, in the amount of $7,500 for tax year 2023.
Second?
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Blanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes 4-0, thank you, Madam Clerk. We do not have any permits and approvals, so however Chief Wilking has asked that we reconsider a motion that we made at our July 18, 2022, Chief, did you want to speak to that briefly?
I will, thank you, Mr. Chair, Select Board, and Mr. Dean. I'm here to apologize on behalf of the New Hampshire Division Emergency Management and, on their error. I was notified late last week that our, the grant we sought for $13,300 to upgrade the public safety facility, security and fencing, is mired at Governor and Council because of the language they provided. So I have provided the Chair some, some change to the language. In a nutshell, the max amount was 13.3, which meant the most they would give us was half of that by the old language. We need 13.3, so they changed the language to the full project would be 26.6. The other 13, we, we have already met the soft match, the match to that with payments we've already made to the, to the facility, so they will give us the 13.3. So, Mr. Chair, you have the...
Yes, I do.
The, 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 the motion, I guess, I'm sorry, in yellow, that needs to be read into the minutes, approved. What I guess I'm not sure on is, do you need to somehow undo what was done, or we just, don't worry about it? The state's just looking for some updated minutes from tonight's meeting, so...
Well, the way, the way this is where, I'm not going to make a motion yet, but I would like to read this.
Sure.
And then I think based on the text collectively, we can agree how we want to proceed.
Do you have the, the July, I, I don't, I only have August, so...
So, we, we made, yeah, no, that's a very good question. We made a motion to accept the terms of the Emergency Management Performance Grant as presented in the amount of $13,300 for purchasing and installation of equipment at the community... presented, in the amount of $13,300 for purchasing and installation of equipment at the community's EOC. And the Board acknowledged that the total cost of this project would be $13,300, of which the town would be responsible for a 50% match, and also authorize the Town Manager to sign the grant. The motion passed unanimously. The text that they're providing us this evening to clarify, quote, "The Select Board, in a majority vote, accepted the terms of the Emergency Management Performance Grant as presented, in the amount of $13,300, to purchase and install equipment at the community's EOC. Furthermore, the Board acknowledges that the total cost of this project will be $26,600, in which the town will be responsible for a 50% match of $13,300."
Okay, so do we need to rescind the July 18 motion?
I've been considering that, Nancy, or Select Woman Blanger. Given the language that they've provided, it's more, it's kind of amending our motion as opposed to creating a whole new motion?
That's fine. If they'll accept an amended motion, then we can go for that. What do you think, Mr. Town Manager?
I think that's the way to do it.
Amended, or rescind?
Yeah, to amend it.
Or amend?
Rescind is a different--
Right.
Rescinding is a different situation.
Yeah, I thought we'd just wipe that out, and then we'd start over.
Yeah, I would make the motion as they have put forward, and move that ahead to the Department of, or to Governor and Council.
So, then I would entertain that a motion to accept the terms of the Emergency Management Performance Grant as--
Amended?
As amended, and the Exeter Select Board acknowledges that the total cost of this project will be $26,600, in which the town will be responsible for a 50% match, which is $13,300. And the Select Board also authorizes the Town Manager to sign the grant application.
I will move that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye. Excuse me. Excuse me, aye.
Select Woman Blanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes four zero. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for squeezing it in.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, Town Manager's report, please.
Okay, just a few things tonight. One is that our water restrictions, as you know, are continuing. There is no outdoor watering. We have been asked for a waiver on that by the Primrose School Construction Project, so we're working through that process. And we don't anticipate issuing any waivers, but the Board would be the last stop on anybody who wanted one. So, we are alerting you to that fact, so you understand a couple of them at least are out there. We've got two new employees that started for EX TV today, which is great, so we're bolstering the staff there. I attended a very effective GIS user meeting last, I think it was a little over a week ago. We've got some issues within our GIS system that we're working on getting fixed, and we have all departments represented, so that process has been very good. We're investigating also some tax credits through the new Inflation Reduction Act for the solar array, if you remember the bond that the town approved for that. So we'll be back to you when we have an update on that particular project. Coast has had a COVID outbreak, and that may curtail their service temporarily in Exeter. So just wanted to let people know about that. And they are demand response here, but we're working to figure out if we'll be directly impacted by it. And then the filming for volunteer recruitment PSAs continues, so we're having good luck with that. And thanks to Bob Guacki and Pam for her work on that so far. It's been going well. And then the other thing is, I know Select Woman Gilman issued something about SB 169, a commission to study double polls. So we're going to ask around and see if there's going to be a willing participant from Exeter on that particular endeavor. And then we're working on budgets for FY '23, and that's at the department level right now.
Great. The PSA is airing yet, or is he waiting till he accumulates them all?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Okay, all right.
So--
And then is there any communication from Attorney Mitchell on Swayze?
Not yet.
Not yet, all right. And last, have we posted for the DPW Director's position yet?
We have not. We're in the final stages of putting together a recruitment package for the position.
All right, great. Any other questions, or Mr. Dean? Select Board Committee reports, Select Woman Gilman, why don't we start with you?
Sure, I just have two. The HDC met and approved the proposal for changes at 154 Water Street, which is currently the Masiallo Group real estate business. But this is the first time the HDC actually used the big screen that I'm on. I posted a picture of the building from the 1896 bird's eye map of Exeter, and it looks very much what they're proposing to do. It's interesting to bring it back to, well, sort of bring it back to what it was. So they're replacing the windows with the grids with just regular retail glass with aluminum construction. And we'll have a hint to going back to what had been there before. But they're going to, it looks really nice what they've proposed. Heritage Commission met, and they've already, we've already, our Chair has already done the PSA for that commission, so I hope everybody's watching and thinks that Jay has explained it very well. We also discussed or took the vote on the watering trough that we've been donated back to make a formal motion to for where we recommend putting it. And I know Ms. McKelroy had been doing some research about it along with Jay Perkins and Highway. And I swear, it had a base, and that was told to me anecdotally, there was a base under the trough, and person knows where that base is. But further research and Mr. Perkins' opinion is that there was no base. So I asked somebody with a horse, how high should a horse trough be? And the trough is high enough, so we don't need a base, and they're prepared to go forward with making plans for a concrete pad and doing the dig safe, et cetera, in the area in front of, next door, next door to the town office building. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Select Woman Cowan.
I just double-checked my calendar, and I had no meetings.
Okay, thank you. Select Woman Blanger.
Okay, so I left my notes at home, so please bear with me, because my battery and my computer didn't last either. So, there was a Conservation Commission meeting on August 9. I was going to be able to do it from the agenda, my apologies. But one of the things that I can remember is the draft for the Rose Farm. And let me see if my notes. It was 6.13 plus acres of conservation land. So the draft deed is done, and it's been forwarded to our Town Council for review. So that should be coming before us if that review passes muster with the attorney. Also, there's some information, but it's in the packet, so I'll, Kristin, thank goodness, did that. Planning Board meeting, we had our first meeting on the draft CIP, and that was on the 11th, August 11. The next one is this Thursday, and that's from 6:30 to 7:00. There'll be a public hearing on that. And then on Friday, August 12, we had a Housing Advisory Committee meeting and finalized the plans for the walking tour, and it's called Housing, Hiding, and Plain Sight. And it's going to be a 1.5-mile walking tour, and Exeter TV will help us promote that. And I was going to talk to you off about maybe adding it to our next packet, just so it's there for the public to, that way. So we're pretty excited. It's to show what kind of eclectic housing, if you will, we have available, that most people just drive by, they don't see it. So the idea is to do a walking tour that shows what options we have right now, and how density looks, the optics of it. And that's it for me for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
If I could hop in on what Select Woman Blanger just said about the--
Please.
--different type of housing, just for informational purposes, the Town Planner is working with a group. We had a grant for looking at our zoning ordinance, so that we might find some relief there by changing some of our ordinances. I just wanted to bring that up, that it's also being looked at that way.
Yes, he also, there's another thing he's working on too, for funding, through one of our sponsors of this walk, New Hampshire Housing. And I've left, I'm so sorry, I left my notes on my desk in my office today. I will catch up the next time, promise.
Okay. Let's see, for me, the River Advisory Committee postponed their meeting. There was nothing new to discuss. The Town Engineer suggested we wait till September. Swayze Park is this Wednesday, I believe Select Woman Ratriolif is away, so I will cover that. And I attended the Budget Recommendations Committee kickoff with Select Woman Blanger and Select Woman Gilman. I think that was it for me.
It's our Christmas. That's our most favorite time of the year.
It is an exciting time.
It is. I enjoy budget--
And we've got some returning committee members and some new committee members. It seems like a very nice blend.
Looking forward to it.
Correspondence, we have a letter from the Department of Transportation notifying the Town of Exeter of a one-time payment to be issued this month in the amount of $257,238.27. And this is in accordance with the statutory provisions for distribution of the block grant aid. Mr. Dean, what does this apply to?
So this will be extra, essentially, extra paving money.
Okay.
So we'll be back when we have a project that we can--
Great.
--fill the bill with.
Perfect, fantastic. We have a memo from Kristin Murphy, Conservation and Sustainability Planner, that Select Woman Blanger alluded to, basically updating Mr. Dean and the Board about the RFP that was issued on March 27. I believe there were no responses. Another RFP was issued, there were two responses, but the, because of the building delays and the supply delays, we were looking out a couple of years. So at this stage, Kristin is reforming the RFP to focus on structural repairs. This is having to do with the Raines Bond Repair and Improvements Project. And she hopes to have the RFP, I'm sorry, the RPF posted within the week, correct?
That's right.
Can I add to that?
Mm-hmm.
Do you mind? Because that just reminded me of something, the conversation and some background. So Kristin's worked very hard on this project for a few years, and we missed out on a grant a few years ago, but Kristin worked with, what's it called? LCHP, and did everything that they suggested she do, and she got the grant this time. And they're still working with her because they understand the difficulty that she's having with nobody responding to the bids. And it's, it's, there's hard to find anybody. There's a number of reasons. So, but in the meantime, there's been a lot of volunteering on the trails and things elsewhere, and they're coming together with a plan right now to use up some money to add some projects to, for budget purposes.
Good, all right, excellent.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Let me do that, that was a little off, but--
That's okay.
I appreciate it.
And then we had a bulletin from the New Hampshire Municipal Association with 2023-24 proposed legislative policy positions. Okay, reviewing the Board calendar, our next meeting is scheduled for September 6, which is a Tuesday here in the Novak Room. Please remember, the following Tuesday will be the election that we'll all be working. And then the Select Board, again, will meet September 19, and then right after that, September 26, the week after, so that Mr. Dean can present the draft budget before it goes to the Budget Recommendations Committee. And then, Mr. Dean, I looked at my calendar today, we'll have to tweak October because of the holiday. I would suggest we not try to do three weeks in a row. I just don't think that's productive for staff. But we'll work that out.
Yeah, especially with budget.
So with that--
Can I just add one more thing on the Conservation Commission? They will be having, so everyone, plan your primary day voting, that's coming up. Please, we'll all be there, ready to greet you. And the Conservation Commission will be, had, did vote to keep their meeting that night.
Okay, all right. And before we adjourn?
Yep, I would like to move to go into non-public, under RSA 91A, colon, 3, 2C.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Blanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye, passes four zero. Select Woman Gilman will reach you downstairs.
Yes.
Connect with you downstairs, okay? Thank you. Board moves into non-public.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16, and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well. time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.